Good evening. It being approximately 7:00 PM. The Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. Before we start, I just want to make mention of the fact that a long-term member of our board and on a lot of other boards and committees in the town and very involved in the Bethany Church passed away, Gordon Green. So I just want to make note of that. He was a great asset to our board and he had a lot of things in the town. He was sort of a true description of a town. He really, he was. He really just thought about the town all the time. Things that he remembered, things that he wanted to see continue, you know, ways he could make the town a better place. So he was, he was a fine man.
Sure was.
All right, Planner's Report.
That's me. Okay, so the Walnut Street RFP did go out and we actually held a site walk last week and six potential developers attended the site walk. It was a formal thing under procurement requirements where they had to pre-register and we took a bus out there and Mark Craig was our bus driver. He was awesome. It was a really good showing, I think, too. I mean, having him as our driver. It was like a comical little thing, but I mean, there he is, the Director of Human Services and he's driving our bus. So it just showed a very supportive environment, I felt. Anyway, the site walk went great. Bill came out there as well since he did the site feasibility study back in eight years ago. He was kind of able to tell us what we were looking at besides trees. And the Housing Authority did a great job. They cleared a little path for us because it's so, we believe nothing's ever been done out there. So it was, it was a great site walk and we were thrilled to have six potential developers there. The deadline for the RFPs is November 18th at 11:00 AM. So we'll find out. In the more bad news department, we did learn this week that we did not receive a Mass Works grant for the signal work at Walnut Street. While it's not unexpected, we were pretty much told we probably wouldn't the first round and because we actually are not shovel-ready technically, we had really hoped with, you know, some political pressure and knowing that we're getting $2 million from the feds, which we still can get. So we're in the queue for next year. We have submitted a formal request for feedback and to find out exactly why we weren't awarded it, but that won't come for a month or so. They haven't even made the awards public yet. But again, I knew when they reviewed us the first time that it was slim to none, but I think I managed to forget that and just believed that it was going to happen. And so it's always disappointing, but we will be back for another round. And as you know, that project cannot be built without a signal, so, you know, but we are going to, again, we need to be sort of quote-unquote shovel-ready to qualify. So we're going to continue on with the development process and have the developers come in with the understanding that we'll be shooting for next year's round. So stay tuned. This is a long game. You know, Greg Speer always says, he's the Chair of the Housing Authority, and he always says, you know, he has five years left to his term and, you know, his goal is to hopefully get something going there within five years. So we knew it wasn't going to be an overnight success, but still nonetheless, we put a lot into it and it would have been kind of cool. 29 Wall Street, though, is underway for the most part. He's passed all requirements. Gabby's been working closely with them and had a pre-construction meeting and they've met all the requirements of the Planning Board's special permit. So we're just waiting for his performance guarantee check to clear and then, but we basically told Barry that it's good to go, so.
That's awesome.
And I drove by there today and it, you know, it definitely looks like a construction-ready site.
It's cool.
He's asking to do test pits next week with Norm and Lance.
And Lance.
Do you have to go get?
No.
Okay. And then he wants to move what, a construction trailer onsite as well?
Yep.
So you'll start to see a little bit of progress there. The Rapid Recovery Plan that I've been working on for a few months, we, that had to be filed by October 8th, so that has been filed with the state. And Diana put a copy up of the plan onto our Planning Board website. If you go under Master Plan and Other Studies, you'll find it there. So again, that's, the context of that is it's almost like a wish list to set the groundwork for future funding. You know, nothing's been fully fleshed out. The timing's so tight, but you kind of almost have to like paint a pretty picture and then go back and when the funding opportunities come up, you go through the exercise of figuring out exactly what you're going to do. But that's, that's how that project worked. With respect to a cultural district, today I met, I had a second meeting with members of the Cultural Commission and it looks like we're going to be pursuing a cultural district in Uptown Foxborough. So there'll be some steps involved with that, but we all know that there's a lot of history uptown, but there's also a lot of, I've learned the difference. I didn't realize, sitting through the meeting, that I have always considered culture to be history. And I was, you know, I learned by sitting through this meeting that, you know, history is cultural, sure, but it's also all the performing arts and the visual arts and all the arts that clearly as a planner, I'm not artsy. So I didn't see that and I was like, oh, okay. So just the history alone isn't, so we're going to be doing some mapping as to, you know, sort of the opportunities and the current, there's quite a bit of culture already uptown. So with all the performing arts and the visual arts, we're talking murals and things like that. So stay tuned. It's going to be a long process. There's a lot of checkboxes and meetings and committees and such, but it's, it's a step we look forward to take. We might, we might actually be meeting with the Town of Franklin tomorrow morning because they just, I live in Franklin and I remember that they just got a cultural district passed within the past year. So I met with them this week about our, they were asking us about our wayfinding, so I said, hey, turnabout's fair play. Can I talk to you guys about your cultural district? So we were trying to set up a quick meeting for tomorrow morning. As I think I've mentioned, but maybe I forgot to mention in my last Planner's Report, Norm, our inspecting engineer, is retiring. So that's coming up quick on November 30th. Big shoes to fill. We did meet with Chris and Lance to kind of talk, those are the DPW and Town Engineer. We did meet with them to talk about these things and we agreed that it probably makes sense to try to keep a Norm-like person if possible and that they could back us up as needed. But for example, Gabby, I think, pointed out that Norm would be out onsite, you know, for hours, watching them pave and making, measuring the temperature and checking everything. And, you know, our DPW guys are not going to be able to sit on a site like that. They just can't be there because they're going to be pulled away. So that's the balancing act we have. But we have to find that right person because we, Norm was incredibly affordable and, you know, and so knowledgeable. So how old is Norm?
Eighty-six.
Yeah, he's retiring at eighty-six. So I guess we'll let him. But we have a couple of prospects, so, you know, if anybody knows anybody who's sort of a retired engineer and would be good for that, pass it along. But we're working on a couple of local prospects.
Should we do anything for him?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we should.
It might be nice, something nice.
We'll talk amongst ourselves.
Okay. So we'll come up with something for that. And then lastly, the Southern New England APA Conference is being held later this month and Gabby and I are both registered unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know. It's virtual. So that's okay, get in front of our computer. But that one is actually a really good one because it's, like I said, it's Southern New England, so you actually get a fair number of subjects that pertain to us. National is good, too, but that's very broad. But when you get to our region, it's helpful. So we'll be doing that. And that's my Planner's Report.
Thank you very much. Anything under active subdivisions, Gab, or anything else like that, other than Wall Street?
We have, I've been informed that Loston Farm is getting ready to start on their Phase Two, Phase Two of the project, so we're looking forward to that. I know Norm had been trying to get Mr. Bonvy, the developer with Bobby Baker, to do the curbing at the subdivision, but I'm not sure where that stands. So little by little, it's moving along, too.
Okay.
Who was doing the roadwork before? Is he no longer?
I think it PJ Hayes.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Who was Bonvy's partner? Is he still involved?
Folkmann.
Folkmann, no, I don't fully.
He's in Texas.
Okay, he's no longer involved?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Has somebody replaced him or is Bonvy going ahead?
I think Bonvy's just doing it on Zoom now.
Okay.
Bill, are you still involved with that project?
Yes. Everything you said is right?
There we go. Okay. All right. Well, minutes, we have any minutes that we have to do?
Minutes, I sent out the minutes of the 23rd yesterday. So you can read them and be fresh in your mind.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2021.
A second now.
Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you have a little vote here for A and R for Garrett Spillane Road?
So this is just a...
You have small copies. They all have the small copies, too.
Yeah.
It's the relocation of a property line, that's all.
We discussed this at the last meeting, right?
I don't think so.
Listen here for the last meeting.
Yeah, so it was, the faint line, faint hash line is where it was and the darker ones were the lot line.
So like right here?
Right here.
Oh, right here.
Right here, yeah.
So this is the old one and this is the new one. So new lots are being created.
And forty-eight, and forty-eight A is going to stay the same? Well, let's change it slightly, but that's, it'll affect both of those?
Right.
Okay.
And they both stay?
And they both have sufficient frontage and access.
Yeah, stay for a moment.
A motion.
Yes, please.
A motion to accept the A and R for Garrett Spillane Road for lots forty-eight A and forty-nine A.
Sir, second?
Second.
Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're welcome. Someone on there does a blah.
Tracy, I have a form for you to sign for this, but it's upstairs, so I'll get it in a little while.
Okay. Do you want me to get it?
That's okay.
Every now and then the sweet one comes in very infrequently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else we can talk about in the few minutes we have to hope before we open our public hearings?
Well, just so you know who's on Zoom, we have Barney.
Yep.
We have Joan Galvin.
Yep.
And we have Mark Craig.
Okay.
Barney's going to be assisting tonight with the zoning stuff because we all know why. The mastermind.
He does a great job. Barney, you can't retire. You're on mute.
Yeah.
But you can retire.
No, we still can't hear you.
I think Kate needs to mute him.
Oh, what, me?
You need to unmute him?
I can't unmute.
We still can't hear you, Barney.
I allow two, I can't unmute him.
She may need to, she may need to unmute.
You're off, try now. Hello Barney, can you try?
Nope.
Nope. Uh-oh.
It's sounding something like a Verizon commercial.
Feed is talking. It says you're talking.
No, that's, that's us. Live TV feed is us.
Got it. Shows you how much technology I know.
Oh, Mark Craig can hear him. But we can't hear Mark either.
We can't hear you.
They can hear each other, but they, we can't hear them.
It's got to be internal.
So it must be.
She has to undo him.
So you two talk amongst yourselves and...
Barney's trying to call me now.
Try, try now, Barney.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you go.
Now we can hear you.
Okay.
Keep talking.
Good. You're probably better off not hearing me, but...
Could you turn him up a little bit, please?
Try now.
He's unmuted, he says.
Yeah, I'm muted.
Okay, we can hear you.
That's better.
Mark, can you talk?
Okay.
Not the, you've got to unmute.
Muted, see his microphone.
Oh, let me see, okay.
How about now?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Not that you want to talk, but...
He's so sloppy.
We're so used to it, it doesn't even faze me now that...
That's because you're on it every day.
I know.
I'm on Teams every, I was on Teams from 8:00 AM till 3:30.
Okay, is it 7:15?
Yes.
All right, it being honored about 7:15, public hearing for zoning article, zoning bylaw, section seven. Amend section seven by adding a new section, 7.6, use of outdoor premises by restaurants.
We need to open it.
Yeah, do you need to open that? I did open it.
Okay. Okay. So we have a little PowerPoint for tonight.
Oh, very fancy.
I know, fancy, right? I wish I had this for AdCom, but it came up so quickly. So the reasoning, so for outdoor dining, as Kevin said, this is an article to allow outdoor dining on a permanent basis. Right now, we're operating under legislation and executive orders that will expire on April 1st, 2022. We've had very, very good success with this over the past two seasons. I think we permitted over seventeen of them for the last two years. You all would be the ones responsible. The Planning Board would be the permit granting authority under site plan review. To be clear, the dining areas would be allowed on parking areas, sidewalks, et cetera. It'd be case by case. Obviously, as we do with every project, they'd come in, show their proposal, and you'd evaluate it based on the criteria that we use. So it would be reviewed, right now, under outdoor dining, it's done administratively because we didn't want to create hardship for the restaurants. We, we've been doing it with a review. If it's on private property, then it just goes, comes into me, goes to inspections, health, building, the police and fire. And then if they all sign off, Bill Keegan issues a permit. So this would be a little more of a formal process, but it only has to be done one time and it will also be predictable. You know, it's not a year-to-year thing. So it allows them to do investments as needed because they know it will be something that's repeated. All right, let me figure out how to get this to go down. It pertains primarily to private property. If you think about all the outdoor dining right now, it's really not on town, town property except for the commons. So most of it's going to be in a sidewalk or something inside a development. But this would also allow the use of a public sidewalk or a parking area like it is today, but that would also require a license from the Board of Selectmen and a liquor license. So this is just zoning. It covers the zoning aspect of it, but it, you know, there may be other permits that are needed under other entities like Board of Selectmen. And then as it makes sense, if you were to, if your restaurant was in a plaza, you know, not owned by you, you would need landlord permission to operate there. And obviously, if the property was sold, it would, that would have to be sort of worked out between the two parties. The Planning Board, I would imagine, would have some language in there that if it ceases to be allowed by the landowner, it would not be allowed. So that's kind of seems likely to me. So that's it.
So we already have guidelines for a stout, for non approving?
Well, it will fall under site plan review, so we have standards under there. But we would likely take what we have now for outdoor dining and create some sort of regulations as we do on other things, like accessory apartments and whatnot, so folks know exactly what they need to provide and we'd have almost a little checklist.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one, one question about the parking thing that you talked about. So as an example, Central Street backs up to the parking lot. The, most of the buildings there have extended lot lines that go into the parking lot, but the basic part of the parking lot may be considered public property by the town. It's run by the town or owned by the town. So how would they, how would they deal with that if anyone really wanted to do it in the back of the, of a restaurant there?
Sure. Well, again, that's where the Planning Board would have to use, we'd have to figure out who owns it, you know, what part of the land they're using, what it's going to do to parking because obviously there's a collective good there. So like, we don't, I think, you know, when the selectmen are looking at, so the selectmen would have purview over the town-owned portion of it. The planning would have, Planning Board would have purview over the whole thing just from a site layout. So it would just be really looking at it and there's no hard and fast rule on it. I mean, you'd have to use your discretion. Obviously, if it took up ten parking spaces, you know, that would probably not make sense. You know, it just doesn't work out there. But maybe there are extra areas, maybe there is a way to creatively do something and not disrupt parking. And in fact, our Rapid Recovery Plan covers a lot of that, so stay tuned. But we, we do know that the parking back there is at a premium and we're not looking to get rid of any of it. In fact, we're looking to make it more efficient to the extent we can. So, so again, that's your discretion and you'll have to look at it.
When an applicant applies, does this go to a public hearing process?
Yep.
So an abbot could pick up?
Show up.
Yeah.
Because this is a permanent change, you know, this is something that would go year to year. They wouldn't have to come in every year, so it's only fair. Like, we did this other stuff sort of on an emergency basis, short term, and if anybody was really worried, we could always say, well, it's going to be gone in three months, don't worry. But this is something that would be long-term, so it's only fair to make sure abotters have a voice.
Did you say it would go year to year or it would not?
It would not go year to year. This would be something they could get approval for and then keep it until...
Something changed.
Something changed.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anybody in the audience has any comments on this particular article? Yes, Mr. Buckley?
You have to come up to the thing so people at home can hear you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill Buckley. I live at 3 Thompson Road. So I just have a question, I guess to Paige, if that's all right?
Or Barney.
Is, or Barney. So there's 7.6.5, and I'm just looking at this today, so that's a bad thing, but it's also a good thing because I'm trying to figure out how this would be implemented.
Right.
So my question is, I'm just confused with 7.6.5. So number one says, "A site plan that is approved by the Planning Board may authorize a reduction by not, approved by, in accordance with this section, may authorize a reduction by not more than 25% of the off-street parking spaces that otherwise are required by these bylaws." And the second one says, "That area that is used by a residence for outdoor dining shall not be used to determine the number of off-street parking spaces that is otherwise required for such restaurant under these bylaws." So I'm asking this question. So the 99, which is an easy one, so let's just say it's the 99 and let's just say they're, they're required to have 100 spaces. I'm just pulling these numbers out. And they're going to take up 25 of those spaces. Is that all right? Is that, is that what this is saying? That they can, they can take up up to 25 of their required parking spaces as permitted under their previous site plan and what's required?
Yes, right, Barney?
Yeah, if, if the Planning Board approves the site plan, that would allow for 25 spaces to be deducted, then deducted from that total, the answer is yes.
And then the next one is, so if you were applying for a, so let's just say again for an, not an argument, but for an example, it's a 99, just as an example, and they're coming in here and they say, "I want to put up a restaurant and the size of the restaurant requires 100 spaces under our bylaw." And at the same time, I'm applying for, is this site plan a special permit?
Site plan.
So at the same time, I'm applying for the site plan, I'm also applying under chapter 7.6.5 because I want to permit this outdoor at the same time. So if, if the building requires 100 spaces and then the outdoor parking might, the outdoor seating might require another 50, we don't count that outdoor seating. So he doesn't need 150 spaces, he still only needs 100. Is that what?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct.
I just want to say that all along.
The outdoor, the outdoor space is not added to the indoor space to determine how many parking spaces are needed.
But I also question, you know, in the case of the Planning Board, they may not, I would hope they, so it's hard, like, we know the 99 has ample parking, you know, they never fill it. So that's one thing. A lot of these parking areas sit empty 99% of the time, so I...
Except for thirsty Thursdays.
Yeah. I would feel a little uncomfortable if you were building something new, you know, just to the minimum parking standards and the board then has to look at it and go, oh, yeah, but you don't need half of it during, during the summer. I don't know, you might want more history there. You might need to open first traditionally and then have a patio or something that's normal, you know, I mean, so...
I understand. I mean, I know it's discretionary and all of that, but I just want to make sure they're all on the same sheet of music of how things are calculated because...
It is a dramatic change.
Yeah. And in five years, we might have a building commissioner who interprets it differently
and I want to be able to say, no, that's not the way it was. And hopefully we'll all still be here, maybe.
The related issue to that is also the staff capacity and the establishment that it's licensed for, because didn't that come up with Union Straw?
It did, because they can only, when they took it to the outside, to have outside dining, when they did the temp out back and now the permanent out front, if their max capacity was 100, it still was 100, so you could collectively...
But I'm not sure what that came up.
That was under COVID regulations, so I don't know.
I was just going to say, I'm not sure what that came up.
Yeah, that was back when the executive order came out. It was very clear that the, the capacity, the occupancy couldn't exceed, it couldn't be added to. It was basically the, the total occupancy of the inside because people weren't allowed inside or so few were allowed inside, it was a way to make it up.
So my question to Barney then is, does that also have an application here, even though I don't see it stated anywhere?
Increasing the number of allowable people between the inside and the outside?
Yeah.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question.
So the question was similar to what Bill was talking about in terms of...
Right.
Parking, capacity of the establishment, okay? And whether they're walk-ups or parkers or, you know, drive-ups or whatever, just, you know, do we have anywhere here that gives any guidelines under site plan or is it handled somewhere else in the regulatory realm? And are we adding an additional 50 people to the capacity of the establishment?
Yeah, I think to get to that specific would, would be beyond what we're talking about here.
Okay.
Because what I'm really trying to address here is if a restaurant wants to utilize outdoor premises, in essence, they don't have to comply with other dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw and parking requirements of the zoning bylaw. So not getting into issues such as capacity or, you know, licensing for, you know, for liquor or things of that nature, but just getting into the specific zoning provisions that otherwise might preclude or prohibit use of outdoor space.
So I think, I would have to check on this, but I feel like the common VIC license has limits on it.
Would you check? Because I could see that coming up at town meeting.
Yeah, I will check. But I do believe, you know, that in liquor licenses, they actually have limits, so perhaps, you know, this, again, something, doing this alone is just addressing the zoning part. We'll also have to all, you know, then if this did pass, then there would have to be some regulations and/or licensing requirements modified to address it. But it's, I will ask about that.
And, and, you know, not, not everything's apples to apples because like the, the 99 or Jake and Joe's, places like that are satellite, you know, they have their own lot, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas Union Straw, while they do have their own lot, they also have the benefit of the public parking along Mechanic Street, the bank at night or whatever those other areas might be, that they can accommodate, you know, the parking. So I'm not trying to confuse it even more, but it's, they're not all the same.
So I have one more question actually for Barney is, so again, 7.6.5.1. So may authorize a reduction by not more than 25% of the off-street parking. Does that include municipal parking that's allowed?
Again, that would, you know, what we're gearing this towards, Bill, is use of private premises. Excuse me, not use of public, a public lot. So I would think that if you're talking about, you know, again, using the example of the common eatery downtown.
Yeah.
You know, that's a, my understanding, that's a public lot. If they wanted to use that space, that would be an issue for the board of selectmen.
Yeah, and that's what it says, too, under 7, 70.6.7.
Right. I'm just trying to think of, you know, for example, so let me throw out another make-believe. Here's the make-believe is, let's just, I'm going to make believe my building I'm in at the corner of School Street. It's all commercial on the first floor. Someday, 12 studios are put on that. So now all 12 parking spaces that we have are dedicated to the studios. And all of the commercial space is basically using municipal parking.
What's your question?
So the question would be, it says, we can, you can authorize deduction more than 25% of the off-street parking. That has no off-street parking. So that's my question, is there any off-street parking?
Well, in that instance, you wouldn't be able to use your private property, so you'd be on public property.
Right. You'd be on...
You'd be going to the selectmen, not, this is for a private property. I mean, where, because where, it would go on a sidewalk. So at that point, then it's done.
I mean, we had examples of that over on Central Street, I think, didn't we?
Just commons, the commons.
Yeah, the commons. I'm just trying to war game in my head. Potential questions. Okay. Yeah, I see what you're saying, Paige. Good. I like it. I'm in favor of it, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Question? Can there be further questions?
Yes, you can ask a question. Go right ahead, Ms. Galavan.
I didn't intend to talk on this article, but anyway, I believe that when you approve businesses with the minimum, with minimum parking, that we always find that they seem to want to increase their business and do better. And they usually end up wanting more parking spaces, so it does become an issue. Now, I believe that in restaurants, they also want to do well. Now, I know that certain nights of the week, it wouldn't be a problem, but I do believe on weekends that having something like taking 25% of the minimum required parking is too much. And I think you should be more aware of this and realize that it creates, that's what kind of creates problems, I think, wherever a business is, especially many of the restaurants. So I think that should be looked at in more detail and, and like, like Mr. Buckley was doing, kind of think of some hypos and realize that parking is essential. And it's something I think you should, almost for businesses as well in the future, have, know that every business has a little space somewhere that's called contingent parking, that they can spread sand and dust and, at some point, if you feel that they need more parking. And you should know that a business has that possibility. So it's something I think that you should think about in our town. We haven't grown that much, but it seems to me that it has become a problem in many, many cases, in many situations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are we voting on these tonight?
Are we voting on these tonight? Paige?
You can.
Do we need to?
We only have one meeting between now and town meeting, so probably, just in case.
Well, here's a question. Well, no, I was going to say, we should take them one by one because some may be more controversial.
I would take one by one, yeah.
So anybody else in the audience have any questions or comments about this? And I'll entertain a motion to close that particular public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve as written, to be debated on the town meeting floor.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you vote to recommend it?
Yes.
Yes.
To recommend.
Do you have any reason?
Do we have any reason?
It just helps to write the letter.
Well, I think that, you know, the reasons, the reasons are pretty explicit that, you know, it's, A, it's been a success on a temporary basis. B, because of that, and because the COVID regulations hopefully will become less stringent. There may be more people who want to do outdoor dining, even, you know, as long as the weather is nice. And it would be a benefit to the businesses that are in and around the town.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Why don't I have a seat in my head?
I know.
Now being some pound and past 7:20 PM, we have a public hearing zoning articles, zoning bylaws, section 8.1, section 11.1, amend section 8.1 by deleting sections 8.11 and 8.12 in their entirety and replacing them with new language and amend section 11.1 by replacing the definition of accessory apartment.
Okay, thank you. So again, Barney worked on this as well. But just to give a highlight, I know this board knows it all, but an accessory apartment is a small, independent, self-contained dwelling unit with a private bath and kitchen facilities within a residential property. It's different from a duplex because a duplex, because an accessory apartment is subordinate. It's clearly not side-by-side or not half of. It is subordinate. As you all know, Foxborough does allow accessory apartments now, but only for folks related to the homeowner. And right now, Gabby did some research, and we have 50, 50, five zero legally permitted accessory apartments in Foxborough. And 10 of those were permitted in the last five years, for what that's worth. I challenge that most folks would not know that there is an accessory apartment in their neighborhood because they do blend into the, to the neighborhood. This zoning bylaw as written would not allow it a detached structure, a separate structure. It's only to continue to allow an attached accessory apartment. This bullet is important because it basically requires that the architectural design of the accessory apartment, the color, the type, and all the external materials that be comparable and consistent with the existing home, and that from the front of the home, it should continue to look like a single-family dwelling. So that, again, that it blends with the character. You shouldn't be able to look at and say, sore thumb, that's an accessory apartment. In this bylaw, the proposal includes only one accessory apartment would be permitted on a lot. Both units must be under the same ownership, so it's not like a condo. You can't sell it off. It must be, the owner must be, must own both of them. This is a new one, cannot contain more than one bedroom. So that's something we had, didn't explicitly say. I think we, for the most part, required that, but explicitly, we're saying that. The maximum size would be 1,100 square feet. Not always, there's a couple scenarios in there where it's like the percentage of the home. But that's, that's the absolute max. Right now, we're at 850 feet. I think we've all sort of discussed that that's kind of small, especially that we're seeing younger and younger couples or people going into these accessory units, living with their family. And then the key is, is that the owner of the residence must live in one of the units. So the owner can live in the primary and rent out the smaller one. Or they could live in the smaller one and rent out the primer. So that's a benefit to seniors, to others as well. This would apply to the R40 district, and that's because right now, today, that's the way it works. R15 actually allows two-family homes, so people can put in a two-family if they want. But if they want to do an accessory dwelling, they do have to comply with the planning board regulations. And the same would hold true here. If this did pass, we would revise the regulations to be consistent with these new bylaws. And so then it would be across the board in town, the requirements would apply to R15 and R40. Does, there's no relief from dimensional requirements given through this bylaw? Anything, you'd have to meet all setbacks, standards, whatnot, unless some relief was granted. But not, that wouldn't be through this. And then there's no borders or lodgers allowed, and the minimum rental period is 12 months. So that's to avoid like Airbnb's and other type of short-term rentals. So why are we doing this? And, you know, what is, so the radical change in this, just to be clear, is that right now, accessory apartments are allowed in Foxborough, but they can only be rented to someone who's a family member. Then that's great, and we have a lot of people using it. It's very important, and I don't want to minimize that. The problem is, there's a few problems. It's very limited, as you see, we've had 10 in five years. It's, you know, it's somewhat limited. One of the reasons is that some of these units can be expensive to create. You know, it can be, you know, $40,000, $80,000. It depends on what people are going to do. Nowadays, it's probably way more. It's harder to get financing and whatnot if you have to tell them that you're going to have to rip out the kitchen. You know, if someone passes on or moves away, you know, basically by being tied to the residency of, you know, being a family member, then it basically makes that unit almost temporary in nature. So it's, you're not going to get that investment, and there are fewer people doing it, and financing can be more of a challenge. This would allow it to be a permitted thing. We'd also allow us, I mean, Tracy and, we have a few other people that are watchdogs on the real estate sections. I mean, we see these illegal accessory apartments throughout town, detached and attached. Maybe this would bring some of them out of the woodwork, you know, maybe they could then comply with the current regulations. Because the fear there is that they're not inspected, they're not regulated. We, you know, we might have people renting in unsafe conditions. So I'm not saying this would happen, you know, sometimes you can't necessarily make people who are not necessarily complying comply, but this is a way that maybe brings it a little more into the daylight. So anyway, there's a need for smaller homes. I mean, you know, I've been talking about housing for over two years, and, you know, no one really wants these big apartment complexes. They don't even want little apartment complexes. They don't want apartments. But they're, you know, there is a need for smaller dwelling units. And we all know that those are not being built right now with the land cost, but this is a sort of natural way to create smaller units. And again, the other key thing to point out is that we don't anticipate a rush on these. In communities, I have some numbers here, but in communities who have adopted this provision, there's been no great rush. Let's see. Dedham, average permit for year was two. Town of Ipswich was seven. Marshfield did go up to 15. Newton had seven, and Wilmington had six. So this was out of a report provided to me from Dedham. So the main reason for that is, for example, not everybody wants to be a landlord. Not everybody wants, you know, I actually have a home in Franklin, and I could put in, well, I don't know if I legally could, but space-wise, I could easily put in an in-law apartment or, you know, an accessory apartment. And I thought it through because I have the space and, you know, it'd be kind of cool to have a little income from it, but I don't necessarily want someone sharing my backyard. So that's an incentive, like, so not everybody's going to do this. It's not one-size-fits-all for everybody. But if you have a circumstance where maybe you are an older person, and your house is getting too big, and you could create a nice unit for yourself within your home and then rent to a family, and then you have a family to help you. Or if you, you know, there are younger kids trying to come back and, you know, if Julia wants to come home, but she doesn't want to live with mom and dad, maybe she, you know, is able to rent on, you know, Tom's got an in-law apartment, you know, so, I mean, there's just, we're trying to create a little bit of flexibility without a lot of regulation and in a way that would actually fit within the character of the community. And again, it's up to the homeowner to actually do it. So we don't necessarily think that everybody's going to run out to do it. I think that's the end of my spiel on that, yes. So that's my spiel. I don't know if Barney has anything to add, but...
Nothing at this point.
Okay.
Just a question. What is the definition of borders and lodgers? When we say they wouldn't allow for borders and lodgers?
So it can't be, it can't be a rooming house, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that we define it in the zoning bylaw, but in absent that, you go to like Webster's and those are renting out rooms.
Right.
Okay.
Short-term.
And the numbers that you just read to us, what was the, like, you know, the numbers went up by a couple every year?
I don't have, I'd have to look a little deeper and pull that out. I just printed out this one page.
No, that's okay, because those numbers aren't high as it is. I was just wondering, like, what were they and what did they go to?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Marshfield going up to 15, that's pretty high, but like, all these other being two and six and seven. I mean, that's, we kind of, we didn't do five. I think, no, we didn't do five. Last one year, we did close to five, I think, out of that number.
My question.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
No, but I think it should be stated in the record that we do have a nice number of endorsements.
Yeah, I'm going to read, I'm going to read some of these into the record as a matter of fact. The only other thing I wanted to add was that it's actually gotten to the point now where people who are building new homes have actually come to the board in advance and said, you know, under the old bylaw, the existing bylaw, you know, I'd really like to move my father in, my mother-in-law, whomever, a relative, at the same time, so when I construct my house, can I, as well, construct this additional apartment? And I think this would assist that as well in that, in that process, whether it's for a relative or for the new, the new purpose. So as mentioned there, I want to just read a few letters into the, into the record here. The first one is from Lorraine Brew and Michael Fairhurst, 126 Mechanic Street. "We are submitting this email in support of Article 2 zoning bylaw amendment, Ray, accessory apartments. We understand the amendment will eliminate the requirement that the tenant be a family member and permit a slightly larger living area. From our perspective, this important change will make it possible to have a more cost-effective way for residents to keep their family members in Foxborough. As family members age, homeowners will have an option to add a larger accessory apartment for them, but with better potential of future income, not limited by the residence requirement. In the long run, this will help to offset the cost of keeping aging family members in their home. For the aging homeowner, we believe the increased permitting, permitted size may make it more desirable for one of the children to reside in accessory apartment. In the future, if the child assumes ownership of the family home, they will be able to use the rental income from the apartment to sustain their residence in the town. The larger, the slightly larger permitted size will provide an ideal living space for either the children or future tenants. Lastly, the property improvements will bring additional real estate tax income to the town, but with minimum impact on services due to the limitation of a one-bedroom per accessory apartment. Thank you for your consideration. Again, we support these changes because they, we believe they will help Foxborough families to remain in Foxborough." We would appreciate it if you could read and enter our comments into the record. The next letter is from Marlene De Leon, 19 Born Road. And she writes, "Regarding proposed changes to accessory apartment bylaw, my husband, Tom Lucchi, and I have resided in Foxborough since 1987, first on Lakeview Road and now on Born Road. I have been volunteering on the Foxborough Housing Coalition for about two years because I want to support increased development of affordable housing that will give current and potential residents the opportunity to live in our town in houses that are right-sized and right-priced for them. I would like Foxborough's housing stock to serve a diverse and inclusive population. By diverse and inclusive, I mean age, ethnic, and racial background, financial capability, physical ability, educational background, and vocation. Elderly people who live here now want to downsize on their limited means. Young families starting out their careers want to be, want to benefit from our school system. Many would want to be part of the volunteerism that is so supportive of community life. Many are attracted by the natural beauty of our conservation areas, open fields, and tree-lined streets. The housing production plan that the Housing Coalition worked on proposed many means for developing affordable housing in ways that dovetail with the character of our town. The revision of the existing accessory bylaw is just one of the options proposed. I believe the revision was carefully crafted so that the potential issues that townspeople might fear would result from accessory apartments are in fact obviated by several thoughtful provisions. For example, would accessory apartments promote transient occupiers? No, because any rentals must be 12 months or longer. Would accessory apartments lead to neglected properties? No, because the owner of the property must live on-site. Would accessory apartments create unsightly cluttering of land? No, because the unit must be contiguous with the main house, and both units must look like a single, integrated whole. Would accessory apartments be ungainly? No, because the bylaw permits, or rather, the bylaw limits the square footage of the unit as a percentage of the total original residence plus accessory unit. The only change is that the accessory apartment need not be occupied by a family member. I believe that the new bylaw is an easy change to existing zoning regulations, or rather, restrictions that could open up new affordable housing units without disturbing the physical character of a neighborhood. The new bylaw leaves in place the intangible benefit of having an owner invested in the residence. I hope the board will vote in favor of the proposed changes to the accessory apartment bylaw. Sincerely, Marlene De Leon." One more, from Jared Craig, 156 R Beach Street. "Hi, Paige and planning board. I am unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I wanted to voice my enthusiastic support for the accessory dwelling bylaw. I think this benefits the Foxborough residents and solves a portion of the housing issues in our town. Please join me in supporting this bylaw. Thank you." And finally, a note from Joan Gallivan, who is attending via Zoom. "I'll be attending the planning board meeting this evening, October 14th, through Zoom, and would like to speak in favor of the accessory apartment proposed bylaw. Thanks, Joan Gallivan." Would you like to speak, Joan?
Well, a lot of the points have been brought up already. I've been part of the housing production plan for a couple of years. I came on the committee after there already was a core focus group. They did a whole lot of preparation, analysis, and surveys and so forth. And soon after I was on the committee, there was a housing production plan produced. And it's been well-reviewed and versed and upgraded. And we feel that although this is something that the town can live with, is a lot of things have happened. And among the things that are happening that make us feel like we're already in a housing production plan process, one of the things is this accessory apartment bylaw, which was, was being named or suggested as one of the possibilities. This would certainly be a great benefit to produce some lower-cost housing, which we have had a lot of trouble, especially, I know, for seniors, to find something that is more affordable and makes them, and allows them to stay in Foxborough. An awful lot of people would love to stay in Foxborough. Because of all the things that it does do, you know, it does not limit to, to other relatives, and certainly there are either people already that are renting it out in violation or would like to be able to rent their premises out and not be in violation. So that's one of the big things that it changes. It would be very desirable for someone that does, so that's maybe needing a little bit extra to afford that property, to be able to have some extra rental that could come in. So that way, it is, as I said, a long-term rental. So that way, it is, as I said, a long-term rental and they would be setting the rental at the price that they wanted, whatever the going price would be. So we think that, I think the whole housing production plan coalition was behind this. And, and I had not heard any negative comments from all of those people. I do have a couple of questions later, but this meets all of the requirements that we would feel would help to produce and have available more affordable housing and in such that it's an accessory apartment. I think there's also a provision here where they can actually decide to rent under a, an actual affordable accessory apartment and meeting some of the guidelines with the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development.
We deleted that provision. Joan, we deleted that provision for the affordable.
Oh, so that's not part of it now? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So that no longer is, okay?
So that's 8.12, that becomes deleted?
Yes.
All right. So anyway, for now, this, these smaller, more residential units that would be available, I think is very valuable. And there are a number of people that are on the committee with me that have been working hard, and this would be one area that would take a step in the right direction to eliminate the accessory apartments just for family members and allow it to be open to more people and be able to get a fair market rental for that. One of the things I was wondering about though, if there is no lease or such, and I'm just going to ask Barney, if there's just, you know, they decide that they don't need to charge for rental, are we going to require some kind of a lease anyway? Say that someone decided to give them some money to pay for construction, and then they said, just, just let them rent there because of that, because someone gave them, their parent or their son or somebody might have given them some money. So should we be requiring some kind of a lease or, and they'd have an informal kind of occupancy there? And then the second thing is if they actually did pay for construction, they would be putting their name on the deed, so this wouldn't, wouldn't be anything like this, or getting a life estate to that tenant. Does that just automatically take them out of the category? And then the, also the party where there is no required lease with money exchanged, is there some kind of a lease that we'd like to see that then we know they're staying for more than a year?
All right, let me, let me try to answer that question. So, you know, again, one of the provisions here is that the rental of either accessory or the principal residential unit cannot be for a period of less than 12 months. I would think that in most cases, particularly if an accessory apartment is being rented to a non-family member, the owner of the premises would, would want to have a lease with that party.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about.
But again, I'm addressing, I'm addressing zoning issues here. I'm not addressing contractual issues between landowner, homeowner and his or her rentee, his or her lessee.
So I think that...
Let me, let me, let me ask a question of the planning board. On, on R-15 matters, do you currently require a lease?
I don't think we have heard you to require a lease.
I don't think there's a mechanism to do that.
Yeah, there's not a, there's not a, it's not within our purview to require a lease.
Okay. And, and your rules and regulations don't, don't require that, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I would think that this would be beyond your purview as well, but, but again, I also would think that it would be within your discretion to require a lease.
It, it would be beyond our purview. I mean, it would say, you know, if, if this was passed a town meeting, the rental of either the accessory apartment or the principal residence for a period of less than 12 months shall be prohibited. But we can't put a requirement that there has to be a lease agreement.
I guess, Barney, my question towards that end would be, based on this language, you know, what, what could you envision or what would we envision would be an appropriate mechanism for enforcing that?
Enforcing the 12 months?
Provision. I can't even...
I mean, certainly you would, you would impose an addition as far as approving the special permit.
Yeah, but there's nothing prohibiting somebody...
I, I don't know how you would, how you would otherwise be able to, you know, to enforce something that's less than 12 months.
Well, and what could happen?
So the question is then, should we strike that language, that particular provision?
I don't think, oh, we absolutely should not, because then we could have transients and BRBs, but here's...
You're not going to be able to enforce that.
But here's, here's the question though.
Require a lease, and, I mean, we can, in our conditions, if this does pass, we can then adopt our regulations to ensure...
That they have to put a lease on file?
Yeah, that they have to file, you know, before, at the time of occupancy, within whatever date they need.
That's great for the first one. That's great for the first one.
It's true.
But if there's ever a problem, subsequent problem years down the road, it opens a door for us to...
We can have a look back, we can do an annual, we can require, you know, in the condition, you can say each year, it must be, you know, the evidence must be submitted and we again have a checklist on our file, kind of like...
Yep, and if they don't submit it, they get pulled in front of the board. Now, the question is, so say somebody doesn't submit it, we pull them in front of the board, can we revoke their right for an accessory apartment?
I want to say yes, but I don't want it to say yes without check. I don't, you know, I don't know. When you start talking evictions and whatnot, but I'm, on a land use perspective, you know, if they violate a special permit?
I think we'd be going way on a limb for that.
I think we would as well.
But I mean, it's the same scenario right now with these in-laws. Excuse me, the same scenario with these in-laws right now that have related people living with them. We have no, we don't know how to check that. We don't, you know, I mean, in, so...
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think...
You kind of have to put a regulation in place and then set conditions and that whole, you know, and we kind of assume that most people follow the conditions. There's always going to be people that don't.
Right, because it's like the, the thing on Facebook that I saw, there's a detached, like, he should, she should, that somebody is willing to rent for like $1,600, which is totally illegal, you know? And, you know, I alerted the building inspector and he does what he can, but he, it can still happen. I think we've got apps, I would not support this if we pulled the 12 months out. I don't want BRB, uh, being...
I just think it's meaningless as...
No, I think it gives us, it gives us some leverage.
If we have...
How could it?
Well, here's a question, that's good, here's a, so we grant it and somebody doesn't, we grant the accessory apartment, five years down the road, three owners later, somebody's not abiding by it, can we pull, you know, is it a, is it a lifetime grant permit on that accessory apartment? Or do we grant it to the homeowner for a certain period of time, like we do the, the parking lots? I mean...
Well, right, right now, the accessory apartments are a special permit as, as it is proposed, and the special permit is granted to the homeowner. So it runs with the homeowner. So when the property is sold, the new homeowner has to come in front of the board to apply for a new permit. That is happening right now with the unit on, on Cedar Street. They, they actually will have to come in front of the board.
So it's not granted to the structure, it's granted to the homeowner?
It doesn't run with the land, it runs with the homeowner, yes.
Okay.
I guess my only point here is that I don't disagree with your position.
Yeah.
And I don't disagree with the intent. I just don't like to have language on the books if it doesn't mean anything, if it can't be enforced.
I think you're jumping to the, it can't be enforced awfully quickly. I mean, how do you know that? I will, but I mean, you're just throwing the baby out with the bathwater, just saying it can't be, and I mean, I think it can be, you know?
Let's find out before we make a vote to recommend.
And I mean, to Tracy's point, if we don't have anything there, then we have nothing to fall back on. You know what I mean? We have no, there's, you know, they could be renting out week to week. We have no, we have to have some guidance in there to ensure that there's something we can hang our hat on to say, you're in violation. That's not our intent.
If that is enforceable.
How is, how is any other non-conforming use administered for any kind of structure? Do you have specific use categories?
Well, if it's pre-existing non-conforming, there's really nothing to do about it. If it, if it doesn't meet that test, then they would have to go to Barney, you know, for a non-conforming use, and either we get approved or not approved by the, the Board of Appeals.
I, I don't think, I don't want to speak for the board. I mean, collectively, I think we're in support of it, just like Joan and Lorraine and a lot of folks are. I think we just have some questions and some confirmation that we need.
Here's what I think, you know, we can look for, for the boogeyman under the bed on anything on this. When we first did this, many, many years ago, I was on the board when this happened, and the very first in-law apartment was on South Street. And there was someone who had an ill relative and they wanted to be able to put their mother or mother-in-law, whatever it was, in the, in the house. And at the time, a lot of the neighbors were very concerned about this. They thought it was going to lead to all kinds of problems. It turned out clearly not to be that way. When they sold the house, they just sold it as a house, they didn't advertise it as home with accessory apartment in it. And, you know, it's gone from there. So now we have 50, but that very first apartment had to be well over 20 years ago. I mean, well, you know, so...
Yeah, and I, here's, do I want an answer to the question, is it enforceable? I do. But to Kevin's point, we could find the boogeyman under any place. I would vote to support this tonight with, sorry, Gary, without any issue.
Hello?
Yes, Joan, go ahead.
Excuse me, I, I asked a question. It's Joan Gallivan. May I?
Yes, please.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I totally, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of this and believe that you're, you all should be quite in favor of this as well. I'm glad you're having the conversation, because I kind of think that this is where things might come up. And I do wish, you know, I'd like you to think about contingencies. And I think it might come up in the beginning more often than later, because I can see where there may be parents or siblings or children, whatever. It's more in the relative thing, again, where someone might put up the money for it or help them pay for it or, you know, just different things like that. And then there may not be this lease and maybe, you know, it might, it might find out about that again, a little bit more. And I just think that we need to understand that a little bit better, how that might be, you know, this is...
Two things, Joan, two things, Joan. First one is, you know, the fact that there's a lease doesn't mean that there has to be remuneration based in the lease.
No, that's what I'm saying, right. It's a time period.
The second thing I'll say, having a lot of experience in these matters, is that lease is only as good as the paper it's written on. Someone has a family problem, you know, it's, it's not, let's say it's not a relative, it's, it's a third party who's living in the home. Something happens, they have to break their lease. They leave in six months or eight months or three months, whatever it is, you know, and they find a new tenant. So it's not like the fact that you have the original agreement with that person is sacrosanct. They don't have to stay there for 12 months if they either can't afford it or they have other family problems and they need to leave or work, they get relocated to, to Boston or something else for work reasons. This happens all the time.
Well, and just, we, we have a lot of in-law apartments in my neighborhood and they, they are family members. And I'm sure they did, they might have contributed to the building of the home. There's no lease, they're not paying, there, I, there's no leases, I'm pretty sure. I mean, I don't know the details, but they're not paying rent. So I, I just think it's like we could split hairs 10 different ways, but the concept is what we're supporting here, which is making it so it doesn't have to be a family member. And I think we have tons of questions and I think they're excellent ones, I think Joan's is excellent. But I think conceptually, this is a good move.
And then what we do have is we have regulations that support, you know, that go along with this special permit. We have ones already for the current one. And this is helpful because like to Jeff's point and to Joan's point, like, I'm making notes, like, we're obviously going to need some sort of annual certification, you know, some process where, because you're right, like, if a family, to Joan's point, I think is what she's saying, is that sometimes you might have a, you know, a mother and father, you have a family, a small family with young kids, and then you have a mother and father selling their primary home and they have a couple hundred thousand dollars they could contribute. So like in your neighborhood, they put it into the big house, they build a nice big house with a good in-law, and it could only be 850 square feet, but you could get 1,100. You could actually live there for 20 years, you know, in this nice little unit. There might not be rent, you know, for that, but if, heaven forbid, you know, something eventually happens or that unit, then it becomes leasable. We need to have a mechanism by which we know, it would be known within, we put in the permit that, you know, we need to be notified and we already have it in there on this thing. And then we have an annual certification, things like that.
And I think Gabby's point about it goes with the homeowner, not the land or the structure.
Exactly. It will extinguish upon that. So, because it's not a multifamily structure. It is a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit, and that special permit is granted to a party, not to a home.
Yeah.
So, but this, this conversation is helpful because it will come up at town meeting and there will be questions. And these are things, you know, if we go to implement this, we'll have to take those into consideration for the regulations and sort of our standard conditions and whatnot.
Actually, I hadn't even thought about that scenario that you just mentioned, though.
Yeah.
That's another one.
So, is there anyone else in the audience who has any questions or comments? Please, just, just state your name and address for the record.
You need to come up to the microphone.
To the microphone.
Kathy Van den Moerma, 109 Morse. I just wanted to know, is this going to count towards the affordable housing requirement?
No.
Can it count towards the affordable housing requirement?
No, because the affordable housing component of it was removed and we're actually already over our affordable housing, but no, it would not count towards it.
Could it count towards it? Could it be added? Why, why was it removed?
There was a provision, Barney could speak more eloquently to it, but there was a provision to allow you to create an affordable unit through the whole state program. The reason it was removed is we, AdCom was sort of pushing back a little bit, there was some fear, and we felt that so few people would ever take advantage of that provision that it wasn't worth sort of sinking the overall thing for it. So it's kind of, we could add that in if this is successful, but we're not even sure that this will pass muster the first time around. So we didn't want to add another complicating, confusing factor that we really don't think many people are going to choose to go through a whole state process to collect less rent. I mean, maybe some will, altruistic, but I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a lot of work. It's not you just declare your, your, your thing affordable. There is a very cumbersome process. So a typical homeowner is not, would not go through that, it's not worth it.
It would just be nice to...
And, and there's not, there's nothing that prohibits a homeowner from, you know, renting the accessory unit to somebody who qualifies under the affordable guidelines. It's just that by eliminating the provision that we eliminated, that unit will not be added to the, to the town subsidized housing inventory.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for the question.
Anybody else?
Make a bush, sorry.
Mr. Buckley?
Yeah, Mr. Jimmin, thank you. Bill Buckley, 3 Thompson Road. So I, I just want to say that I admire, I've told pages, you know, all the people who have a passion for this and are concerned about it, and there's no doubt in my mind that they're moving forward based on what they think is best for the town. Some of these things I just happen to disagree with. So, you know, this was put in back in about 1992, I think, ish, like Kevin said. And when it was initially put in, the, I think the restriction, I'm not sure what it was, but I actually have an in-law apartment, by the way, at my home. And it was built under the first bylaw, and it's actually about 1,000 square feet. I was trying to think how big it is. So it's bigger than what was now because it was permitted under the previous bylaw. But I also had to live in the house two years before I can make it into a, an apartment. So what I did is I designed it, because I built my home so my mother-in-law could live with me. So I designed it and I had no problem getting a loan. And the, and I designed it so that there was no stove, but I put a piece of cabinetry there. So in two years, I applied for the special permit. The board gave me a special permit. I took the piece of cabinetry out and I put the stove in, it became a legal apartment. Unfortunately, my mother-in-law passed away after only three years living there. So that's been empty for 18 years. So I just point that out, I would hugely benefit from the passing of this bylaw if I chose to exercise the rights under that. So, but I do have a couple of things. The first of all is, is the original bylaw was put in, you could have a larger apartment, and then it was decreased to 850. And, you know, there was a reason for that and I don't remember why.
The original, I think, was based strictly on a percentage of the footprint of the, of the existing home.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I believe that the, the limit of, because of the percentage, some of the smaller homes, the, the apartment would have been, was too small, you know? There was, there was a house on, in my neighborhood, on East Belcher, that they actually tried to count the porch and the deck as part of the, as part of the house so that they could get a, you know, a livable apartment.
So I have done a few of these, not a lot, because the town has made it so easy, and I think rightly so, to apply for these permits. A lot of people just do it themselves. But I haven't heard, any of the ones I've had, I've never heard that there's an issue with the 850. So just to point that out, you know, and I, like some of the bigger homes that are being built today down in, I think, Lawson Farms. Just a big one there. Huge house, but, you know, 850 seemed to be all right. So, and it's not a small increase, it's a 40% increase, you know, pretty much. So you're going from 850 to, for my example, is, you know, 1,000 or 1,100 square feet. So that's the thing, but I understand the percentage, so I think that will have softening. But the biggest issue I have is Foxborough has a huge, and it has a huge section of it, the central core, I'll call it, just not go casket, mechanic, you know, uptown, R-15 zone, where we allow multifamily housing. And I know that this is different, it's a little bit different, but there is a huge stock of it. We keep talking about affordable, affordable, affordable. Foxborough has a very huge range of housing in here. We have smaller homes, like where I grew up, over on Carmine Ave and that neighborhood, and we have the big homes like in Stonehurst, Lawson Farms. And we have, I think a third of our housing stock is rental. And a lot of this appears to be, well, not a lot of it, all of this is going to be rental. This is going to be rental. Nobody's going to give somebody a chunk of money to build a house and live there for free unless they're.
A relative.
A relative.
I agree.
So this is rental. Okay, so now we're talking about rental property. I live in the R-40 district and I don't, I want, when I first moved home, you know, the Army, I moved into one of Kevin's projects, you know. And then I moved out of that and I moved into a duplex in the R-15 zone. And I moved out of that and I moved into an R-40 zone. So I want to live and I wanted to live a single-family housing. And so in my mind, this is creating duplex housing in an R-40 zone rental. And I know that there is, you know, a lot of good arguments for it. Again, the good faith, they're good faith arguments. But I could also make those same arguments for duplexes. Oh, I want to buy a duplex because I want to live on one side and I'm going to rent it to another and I'll be there and that type of thing. And so, and as we talked about, you guys spent a lot talking about, is enforcement of this is going to be, could be difficult, just as it is now. A lot of it is by, my wife says to me, well, why don't we rent that out? And I'm like, we can't. It can't be done because it's in our permit. We can't do it. So again, enforcement is an issue and you rely on people's good faith. And it's a different beast. You know, we talked about the fact that, or somebody mentioned the fact that, you know, not everybody wants to be a renter. Well, some people do want to be renters. And so they might not take care of it. And I know I'm what-ifing a project to death, but since everybody was doing all the positives, I want to kind of push it out. It's a different scenario when you have your parents there. Nobody cares. Nobody cares in any zone when you're taking care of your kids, your parents, you know, aunts, uncles, whatever it happens to be in your home. It's just a different scenario. So I'm listening. I'm not speaking against it. I mean, I'm pointing out these things. I don't know how I'm going to vote. Right now, I'm not in a positive mood on this type of thing, but, so I just wanted to bring out those issues.
Thank you for your input.
May I speak as the resident, please?
Please.
My name is Gabriella Jordan. I live on 100 Spring Street. My husband and I purchased a duplex many years ago and my parents lived on one side and we lived on the other. My children were small when we bought the house and my mom babysat my kids. Now my parents are elderly and I was taking care of them. Now my dad became of pretty poor health, so he had to move to an assisted living facility. My mom moved with him. We have an empty apartment on one side of our house. And the discussions that have been happening here have been happening in my dining room table. My husband and I have been discussing whether or not we want to rent the other side. Do we want renters in our, you know, in our house? And, and yes, we do, because we would like to have the income. But it behooves us to make sure that we rent to people that are going to be decent, that are going to take care of our property and that we don't have to call the cops on, you know, at 2:00 in the morning because they're having a party. The house next to us is rented and we have had to do that because it's just the homeowner is not there to, you know, be vigilant about it. So if the owner is occupying one side of the house, it is important because it'll, it's important to them to make sure that they don't rent to a knucklehead. So that's, that's my line of thinking.
So under the current bylaw page, because it's an in-law apartment, there's a requirement that it has to have access to the other portion of the house. Does that go away under this?
It still has to connect, right, Barney? I'm pretty sure there's still.
Yes, that's correct.
That it does have to connect. A common wall or floor or ceiling shall separate the accessory apartment for the principal residence. Direct access between the two units shall be provided.
So that is a distinction because now they are really living in your home.
Yes.
Not just next door to your home.
And ignore them.
Yes, so I mean, you have access, as they have access to your house for that, and that may have its own issues, but you know, you have access to theirs as well.
Well, I assume the doors would be locked.
So you can keep your eye on your resident, your tenant. You can keep your eye on the condition that they're living in, et cetera. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's, I hear Bill's concerns about it, but I think that's a much more likely scenario where ownership will keep an eye on whoever renter is as opposed to, you know, situations where, like Gabby just said about the house next door, where there's no one there who's paying attention to what's happening in their home. Hopefully, when they get their home back from the renters, it'll be in good condition. You know, that's the issue.
I agree. There's always that pride of ownership that you take care of your property, yes. And I would just say, without beating this thing to death, you know, Bill, you had raised the issue about, you know, we have plenty of options within the R-15 zone and, you know, different types of congregate housing scenarios. But from where I stand, one of my bigger concerns, you know, as we go forward, is it seems to me that there's more and more stress on the R-15 zone. And I think this would, in certain ways, in a very limited way, really, I mean, obviously not replicating or wouldn't think that would be an appropriate thing, but this could, you know, in a limited way diffuse some of that stress, you know, throughout the towns. And I, you know, we know right down on Beach Street, we've got grandfathered duplexes, you know, tiny ones, but you'll never, you'll never see those built in an R-15, in an R-40 setting. You don't see them built in an R-15 setting now, not to that scale, for sure.
No, even the ones that are being built in the R-40 are much larger, you know.
Jeff, I think that's a really good point.
The R-15, they're half a million dollars aside. I mean, they're many houses attached to each other, really.
So my point is I am in support of this, but I'm going to suggest that we put a hold on it until we get some of these things ironed out and we have a meeting before town meeting and we can vote at that time.
So we need to keep the public hearing open until we have that discussion? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be my.
We have to do a date and time certain, so we'll have to do the next meeting and, you know, at least need three people to show up and keep it alive.
I mean, I don't think it'll take us more than five or 10 minutes.
Right. Is everybody planning on being here for October 28th?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing until October 28th.
Is there a second?
7:10 PM.
7:10 PM.
Do we have anything? Oh, sorry, wait. Do we have anything?
No, we've got an A and R and a long reduction of the list.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Are you all opposed?
I'm opposed.
Wait. What just happened?
Two of us voted to continue it and two of us voted not to.
Okay, so that's a not continue. So what do you want to do?
Oh, so do you get to invoke your alternate?
No, you can't. What do you guys vote?
I just, here's the thing. I think, I think we can vote tonight because I don't, there's, I would love those answers before town meeting and I think it's beneficial to have them for town meeting because somebody's going to, else is going to ask them, rightly so, but it's not going to impact how I vote.
Well, my point is that those answers might affect the text.
We can't change.
You can't change the text.
You can change the text minorly, but not much.
Yeah, you can't, you can't change it.
You can't make it any more restrictive.
Right.
Or the moderator's choice on how to, you know, so I would not count on changing too much.
Yeah. And you'd have to do it on town floor. We can't change this.
Kevin, let me ask you, other than out of respect for Jeff's motion, are you inclined to vote for this?
I mean, I could vote for it. I, you know, I, I, I respect his wanting to get the additional information, but I don't want to say discouraged, but I think Paige's points are well made that, you know, we probably wouldn't be able to make it much more restrictive or just carte blanche.
Well, I, actually and honestly, the way I was talking, I was not looking at making it more restrictive. If anything, it was going to be less.
By eliminating, limiting the trauma.
I don't, just, you know, I don't like to go into things where things are still kind of iffy, especially because I think of all of these, this is likely to be the one that could be potentially the more hot button issue.
But I also think we could discuss it.
I think we can get those answers.
Till 8:00 AM tomorrow.
And I don't think, those answers aren't going to necessarily go in the bylaw.
Possible scenario.
I really think your regulations, I mean, we have a huge accessory bylaw regulation that exists with the current section 8.1 now, and that's what we use as our checklist. So I, we can assure you that you all are going to have the chance to adopt regulations and things like enforcement. Now, you're never going to be able to, like you say, your concern is, you're not probably going to be able to physically remove somebody from a building or from an accessory apartment if they're found in violation, I think. That's part of your concern. But I mean, I think we have that concern anyway, like I think.
We can't do that now.
If you found, that's detached in the backyard, if someone's living there, I don't think we could get them kicked. So I'm not, again, if we have non-law abiding people, like just a regulation alone is going to stop.
Not going to do anything.
So I guess I'm saying, I think we can regulate and like some people like Bill Buckley is like, well, no, we're not allowed to do that because, so I think he's going to follow people. Some people just aren't, so.
I understand that.
But I think we'll have a very firm check, checking, checkpoint thing in the regulations, like, and that all your standard decisions would have conditions that say those types of things. It shall be revoked upon this. You must check in with this. You must do that.
So here's the thing. I think we, since we're split, it's forced.
Not carry.
It doesn't carry, so we need to vote.
So I'd make a motion to close the public hearing this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'll make a motion that we suggest passage of this article.
No, we're going to suggest supporting the article. Recommending the article, the zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 8.1 and section 11.1.
Is that a second?
Now I'll second that.
Any reasons?
Oh, I knew he was going to look at me. You say it, you say it so much more eloquently.
Oh gee. I think to expand from the in-law only apartments beneficial to the town for the reasons stated relative to allowing existing older residents to have access to potential rental income for new homeowners who purchase a home to have similar, a similar benefit. And I think to just allow a more, just a greater opportunity to allow affordability, even though it's, this does not come under the affordable housing bylaw.
Just by nature of the smaller homes?
Yes.
Correct.
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote.
All those in favor? Did we do this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I would abstain from that vote.
Okay. One abstention. It being sometime past 7:25 PM, public hearing, zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 10.5.4. Amend section 10.5.4 by adding a new subsection four to provide a waiver of site plan review in the Foxborough Center Overlay District Fcod in certain circumstances. Well, explain this.
Yes.
You did that well, Kevin.
Up on the, on the display is a zoom in of the Fcod. The Fcod stands for Foxborough Center Overlay District. It's the uptown area shown in, there's actually a green outline there. It's not the pink. The pink is actually the zoning district, but the green outline you could see is actually the Fcod. And that's an overlay district. You all, I know, are familiar with that. So what this bylaw does is formalizes something we've been dealing with and we've been talking about for a couple of years. We had the bakery on Central Street come in. Technically, because it's a change of use, it triggers a site plan review, but she's not changing anything physical outside the building. There's no change to parking, drainage, any of the physical site improvements that you would look at under a site plan is not changed. Same with, you know, all of those Central Street blocks. We've had Foxborough Nutrition, that, so those types. So in those instances, if you recall, these people had to come in front of the board, get rubber stamped for a waiver, and then go to the building commissioner. So we're, we're trying to formalize this process where the building commissioner could, if there are no exterior substantial changes, just issue a building permit. But in the case where there were going to be changes or if design review was required in his mind, then it would still require a site plan. So he has the discretion, but it just allows the applicants and us to skip that step of just rubber stamping a site plan waiver because they're not changing anything on the site.
Well said.
Thanks.
She showed you.
There you go. I knew she'd have a good answer. And I, and I'll be perfectly honest, I support this because I've, I've seen this many, many times in front of this board where somebody has a little store. Now someone who does taxes moves in. There's really no change, though. They do the interior to suit an office as opposed to a retail center. And we have to call them in and make them ask for a permit in order to do that. You know, I, I just think as long as, as it follows the guidelines that you have here, it will make things much easier for the people who own and or rent retail or other types of uses in that, in that Fcod.
Much more business friendly.
It's no brainer.
Anybody have any questions in the audience about this? Comments? Mr. Buckley?
Really?
Why is it only in the Fcod?
Because we don't even want you putting Starbucks in there.
That's the only one we've ever come up against.
So up at Patriot Place, when they have a change of use, they don't come here or when they go into a plaza and it goes from a, an office to a retail?
We haven't seen them for whatever reason. I mean.
I know what you're looking at.
So to his point, sorry, to his point is, why were your, you know, would it make sense if it's in the Fcod or not? Why would we want them to come in front of us?
Duly noted, and we can do that next time, but we can't change it to this time. But, good point. I guess, I think the only, the only excuse I would offer is that it actually hasn't come up. We've just dealing with the rubber stamping on Central, it seems, so. But maybe we should look at it for everything. That's a valid point. I just hadn't even thought of it.
I think because it's in the center of town and people see it, then they start to ask questions. Maybe they go to some other town official and go, hey, can he just do that? And the next thing you know, we're bringing him in.
But we also don't have access.
As opposed to if it's at, you know, the Foxfield Plaza, or what used to be the Foxfield Plaza over there, or, or as Bill set up on Route 1, you know, it's almost like it's not part of town, even though it's clearly a part of town, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that is now that you think of it, mention it, but I'll, we'll have to look at it.
More motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, motion to close the public hearing related to zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 10.5.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to recommend the changes to zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 10.5.4, as written.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because it's more business friendly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sometime past 7:30 PM, public hearing, zoning article, zoning bylaw, chapter 275. Amend the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, chapter 275 by removing all references to stories throughout and amend section 11.1 by deleting the term story, S-T-O-R-Y, and its definition.
So this one looks, in the, in the warrant, looks scary and complicated, but it's really rather simple. As stated, right now, when you look at height in Foxborough, you recall, we look at both building height and stories. It kind of came to our attention a couple of years ago that this is sort of a problem because, and the best way of highlighting it is, the example I have up there is, in the R440 zoning district, the maximum height is 35 feet and two and a half stories. Both of those requirements prevail. By definition, some basements are actually a story. So that means that several, you know, many single-family homes out there are actually three stories or four stories, you know, so they're not, they're not compliant. They're not the only ones, but so we started, that was sort of triggered us. Then we went to, here's a little picture of where it's in our zoning thing. I just wanted to make a picture. I'm sorry. I used symbols, it was fun. Anyway, we reviewed some other bylaws, actually Barney did. Barney gets all the credit on this one, and Gabby and Diana, I think everybody worked on this jointly. Really, what it was, we looked at other towns and found that many towns are now, have abandoned the term story, and they're just using height. So for this bylaw change, there is no change to any heights. Not a single number has changed. It's just that we're getting rid of the word story and allowing heights to prevail, because heights are absolute, like you know what you're talking about, whereas stories can be variable. You know, a story could be a 10-foot story or 15-foot story. So this way, we're going straight to height alone, and there are no, but to reiterate, there are no changes to the height requirements in Foxborough. Barney, did I forget anything?
So if I could, if I could have the floor?
Yep.
If Paige is done?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So despite Paige's, you know, very kind words, I think we may still have, have an issue that needs to be resolved. You know, as Paige indicated, the intent, the precipitating factor as far as these, you know, the series of bylaw changes was to address the fact that many Foxborough homes are noncompliant with the zoning bylaws dimensional requirements, and it's largely because the bylaw deems a basement to be the first story of a, of a structure. So by example, any garrison colonial, and most colonials would be, would be three stories and therefore not be compliant with the current bylaw requirements. So what we attempted to do, as Paige indicated, was to eliminate all references in the bylaw to the words story or stories and just deal with building height dimensional issues from the perspective of, of feet. About, up until about, oh, maybe two and a quarter hours ago, I was pretty confident that we were achieving the objective. And then Mr. Buckley happened to call me at about 6:15 this evening and indicate that he thinks the problem may still exist.
I'll read them before.
So I think the best way to resolve this is really to take no action tonight. Bill and I could take a look at the issue. Obviously, any amendment or revision to what you have in front of you would have to come before town meeting. But, you know, I think it might be appropriate for the two of us just to take one other look, one additional look at this and make certain that, well, hopefully make certain that, that there isn't an issue, but obviously if there is, to, to find the appropriate corrective language.
What is the issue, Barney?
When I did speak, when I did speak with Bill around 6:15, I was concerned. I'm a little bit less concerned now, but again, I haven't had a chance to speak with him.
Can you, can you, we, we missed part of what you were saying about, what is the issue?
Is Bill there?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, Bill wants you.
Please, Mr. Buckley.
It'll be easy for you to explain.
Trouble maker from 6:15.
I know. And I apologize...
Not at all, Cat Block.
That I didn't look at.
Notice how he threw you under the bus, though.
Until this afternoon. I apologize. So what, what the issue was, is I was reading it, I'm trying, I'm looking at it, because again, I, I have to execute under the bylaw. And so when the bylaw, the way it's written now is, it says that a home can be 35 feet high or two and a half stories. A half a story is not defined. There's no definition of a half a story. And then, as Barney said, in our bylaw, under some conditions, a basement is defined as a story. Specifically says it's a story. And you guys remember this over at the firehouse? You know, we had that issue with that building, with, it was going to be the apartment building.
Yeah.
So that was what triggered it, and then we started to read the sections and said, shoot, my house is not in compliance. Yours is, neither is yours, Jeff.
Neither is mine.
Okay, yours. So I probably designed most of your houses, so these houses are not in compliance if you read the bylaw a certain way. Now, until recently, it was read, it was just common knowledge that this is the way we did it, and it wasn't an issue. The two and a half stories meant the two stories and that the basement we counted as a half. So what we're trying to do is remove any, you know, interpretation out of this. So as I'm reading it, I'm looking at it saying, the, the failsafe for us, us, is three, 35 feet or two and a half story, whichever is greater. Jeff, your house is higher than 35 feet. My house is higher than 35 feet. Yours is probably higher than 35 feet. But the two and a half story was the failsafe. So if we remove the, the stories out of it, lots of houses in town are going to become pre-existing, non-conforming. And at some future point, that could be an issue.
Problematic, yeah.
So that's what I was reading, and again, I apologize. My Barney asked me to read this like three weeks ago and I didn't. So...
You just, you know, what sort of issues could arise from that?
So you go apply for a building permit, and the building commissioner says you, your house is pre-existing, non-conforming, and you need a finding from the zoning board of appeals. And then you pay me and Mr. Spillane lots of money...
Yep.
...to do something like that, which really is unnecessary. So we, we were just brainstorming it back and forth when I called Barney, and hopefully we can come up with a solution.
And, and the other issue, you know, that would respond to Jeff's question, if somebody has a house and they want to add, add by going up, if they're in excess now of 35 feet, they're going to require a baroncy from the zoning bylaw, from the zoning
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't want us to move forward with anything that could create problems when we were trying to resolve it. So if Barney says, hold and do no action for the moment, then I think that's what, I mean, I don't, and of course, Mr. Buckley's opinion is always very respected. I think we should hold. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue, continue?
Yes, continue.
Continue the public hearing related to zoning bylaw, chapter 275.
Second.
Continuing it to when?
Yeah.
Oh, continuing until...
October 28th?
At 7:00.
At 7:20. 15. Because we didn't do anything yet.
October 28th, 7:15.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it being sometime past 7:35 PM, public hearing, zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 11.1. Amend the definition of brew pub in section 11.1.
Yes, so, I know the board's familiar with this, since I've told you about this and you sponsored the article, but we were approached by Warm Town, a Patriot Place, seeking to allow distilled beverages and similar. As I was working through that, I was realizing they'd need a citizen petition for a hundred, of 100 signatures, because it's a special town meeting, and then I was like, we have Shovel Town coming, and it seems to be a trend in the, the brewing industry. So it just seemed that, as you know, the, and the board decided that it made sense for the board to do the article rather than having a, a private entity do it. So we have come up with a change, tried to do it as minimal, tried to keep the structure of our existing definition as much as possible. So here's, believe it or not, this is simple. But basically, the blue text is the new text, and the strike through is the deleted.
In the, in the last bullet?
On the last bullet, yeah, the top one, just to tell you. So basically, it's adding other craft malt beverages, it's adding the term, the production of fermented liquors such as wine and hard ciders, and the distillation of spirituous, spirituous liquors. Each of the foregoing limited quantities on-site retail to restaurant patrons, provided that the aggregate area devoted to any such production and distillation does not exceed 15% of the gross floor areas of establishment. So it basically keeps the existing but adds a little more ability to do, you know, not just the beer, but the liquors, ciders.
Can you just explain the last sentence there? Tastings and tours and retail, whatever, all that whole thing about...
Um, we can try, except it already...
Wholesale sales of the products and related goods.
Well, that exists today.
That exists today?
Yeah, that's, that, we, only the blue is new. Anything in black is existing today.
But so that would allow them to do these new types of beverage at a wholesale basis as well?
Yep, on a limited basis, yes. Right, Barney?
Correct.
Bill, do you want to correct the stream?
The, the best I can come up with as far as wholesale sales would be, you know, for a brew pub to say, be selling on a wholesale basis to another restaurant.
Can I ask, so what is this?
What is what?
What's the difference between a craft beer and other craft malt beverages?
More like you get to a whiskey?
Like, uh, hard seltzers?
Hearts, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was Googling, I learned about whiskey.
Notice Gabby knew the answer.
Yeah, Gabby's right on it.
Okay, is there, any comments from anyone in the audience or out of members of the board?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, motion to recommend...
Support.
Support the changes to the zoning, oh, excuse me, to the zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 11.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need a reason for this one?
Yeah.
Moore's the batter and everyone likes a good drink.
No, and we want...
And it's business friendly.
It's business friendly.
It is business friendly. You can, you can delete my facetious remark.
That one I should take care of.
I'll let you say that on town meeting floor.
Okay.
Don't you get to read the report usually? I think you do.
Who knows? Well, maybe I won't be there. Sometime after 7:40 PM, public hearing, zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 11.1. Amend section 11.1 by inserting a definition for habitable floor area.
All right, this is all Barney.
Well, this, what, what Paige has on the screen right now really summarizes it as, as well as could be. You know, as you can see, habitable floor area comes before the zoning board with respect to home occupations and extensions, alterations, or reconstructions of non-conforming, single and two-family homes. There's, there's no definition of the term in the bylaw. And depending on how one characterizes or how one determines what is habitable dictates whether a matter can be approved by the building commissioner, or permit can be issued by the building commissioner, or a special permit from the zoning board is, is required. This essentially, the definition that's, that I'm proposing is essentially how we are handling the issue. I just feel that it's important and appropriate to codify in the bylaw exactly what we mean by habitable floor area.
Yeah, I think this makes sense.
I think it's just housekeeping.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions from anyone in the audience or the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to recommend...
Support.
Support changes to zoning article, zoning bylaw, section 11.1 regarding habit, habitable floor area.
Second.
All those in... Because?
Oh, becau, um, it's to codi, you know, it's to codify a standard practice that we have been hearing to provide greater clarity to the residents of Foxborough.
Good job. That's a good job. It's comprehension.
And that's at, like, past my bedtime.
All those in favor?
And, and also, it's, it's the only thing that I've written that Bill Buckley has in question, so.
No. The brew pubby didn't.
Well, you know.
Oh, that's right, it was Kevin. It was Kevin.
Okay, if we vote?
Yeah. Yes, it... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can we take a two-minute break before we go to the next public hearing?
Of course.
Thanks, Barney. You rock.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barney.
Good night.
It being sometime past 7:45 PM, we have a public hearing, definitive subdivision approval, 31 Water Street,
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bill Buckley. For the record, I work for the Colony Group, and I'm here representing the applicant, Stephen Gengary. Also with me this evening is the attorney, Mr. Spillane. And the, where we're here before the board is for the application for a definitive plan for a two-lot subdivision, and is located at 31 Water Street. And I'm going to share my screen here. Open up the drawings first. And let me open up that one.
Did you break it?
No. So what I, what I like, this is, hasn't come up yet, okay? Here we go.
Oh, there it is. Oh, there it is.
Great. Okay. So, let me just, this is the property, so this is 31 Water Street. You are coming from South Street over here to the right, where my hand is. This would be South Street, up the street here. Woodland Road is over here on the other side of Co Castle Lake. You'd come down, go over the dam, and here is a, this is a four-acre parcel of land. It's an existing single-family house on the property right here at this location. It's probably another 150 feet or so to Prospect Street. So, this is the project, and as I stated, what we're looking for is the construction of a subdivision roadway in order to create another lot on the property. And what I want to do is I want to stop sharing this, and I want to share another drawing. Let's see, where is that drawing? Gotta find it. Find, there it is. So this drawing right here is, what this is, is what I call a proof plan. And what we did is we filed this with our, with our application. And let me zoom in on it a little bit less. So what this shows is a subdivision roadway, and actually, these lots are exactly the same lots as we're proposing under the design, but this is a proof plan that shows how a roadway could be built in this area in accordance with regulations. So, it is a, we're only servicing two homes, so therefore it will be a 20-foot wide road, 20-foot wide road. We show sidewalks on both sides, all the way around the cul-de-sac. It's a 42-foot radius cul-de-sac going all the way around, even though there is sidewalks on Water Street. We do show it how we do it here. It would be underground water. Stormwater would be handled down in this area here. This is a low depression that's currently there. We'd have to shape it up if we were gonna go this route, but that's where we would do stormwater infiltration because of the, we'd be right up against the property line over here on the west side, so we would have to build a retaining wall on that side. Probably, down here at this point, it might be five or six feet high, and then it would get smaller as it goes this way. But we could fit in a road, we could fit in the sidewalks, and it would meet all of the requirements of a subdivision. So I think this is much more easier to lift, is what I would call it, than what we just finished over on Orchard Place, which was, you know, unique. So, this is what I would call a proof plan for this. And access would be off this roadway, although it could come off of Water Street for this new home. And then this would be the home on the back lot. So I didn't know if anybody wanted to ask me questions about this, had some issues on it, anything like that. I could talk through that. And again, you know, we're showing houses and stuff, but really, we're here to talk about the roadway. We have to show houses under the subdivision rigs, but it's a guess. Down here in this corner, this is an existing home that's accessed from a driveway. Under any scenario, that home is gonna go. It's, I guess it's been looked at by multiple builders, and they've determined it is not salvageable, yeah. There was a tree in it today. I don't know when the tree fell down. It knocked into it, and they must have chopped it up. So, that's that, proof plan. And if everybody has no questions for that, let me, it's a good one.
Live, live, live.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, really. Is this already two lots?
It is. If you look at the assessor's maps, it is two lots, but it's really not. It is, it is two lots on the assessor's maps because it was a subdivision done, I think, back in the 70s. But the one lot on the, so it's a real lot on the right, $40,000, and then it has a 50-foot right-of-way going into the back. So, it doesn't exist. Even if it was real back then, the, it's merged since then. So that, you can't have a 40,000-square-foot lot anymore because it's within 250 feet of a water body, so it now has to be a 60,000-square-foot lot. So, let me try this again, try this one more time. Share. And this is the rendering that I've, I've given you a copy of, and then passed out to some of the neighbors that are interested in it. Let me zoom in on it a little bit. So you can see, here's the roadway. This would be a roadway. We'd be asking for waivers for construction standards. So we don't want to build the roadway. What we want to do is build a glorified driveway, similar to projects you've seen probably three or four over the last several years. This house, the existing house, would continue to access off of Water Street, because what we would want is the driveway to just access the home in the rear. So the idea would not be to have a homeowners' association, as we've seen on some projects. What we would just do is have the house in the rear own that parcel A, which is the roadway, and he would have the right to access, and he'd have to maintain it. It would never become a town roadway. It would be 12-foot wide, again, which is a standard driveway. In the town here, we would put a little turnaround on the end of it, and then it would go forward. The utilities would be underground, the electrical would be underground, the water would be underground, as, you know, on any other project in town. We would, we would ask that the board to waive the requirement, and I, and I don't think I have it here, but on the, the small set that you have, that I gave you, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, there's the requested construction waivers. So, to just, just kind of go down through them, these are very similar and to what we've seen on other ones. The pavement width, we'd like it to be 12-foot wide instead of 20. Instead of having a cul-de-sac, we'd request a construction of a hammerhead. We've waived, we request the board to waive the requirement for curbing, no curbing, waive the requirement for sidewalks, no sidewalks, waive the requirement for a full storm management system. We do have a storm management system, but it's a stone trench and rain garden. Let me show you that, I didn't talk about that. So on this roadway, you know, a typical roadway is pitched like this. It has a crown, goes off in either direction. In this particular case, what we would do is pitch it to the right. As you drove in through Water Street, it would be pitched to the right. We'd have a stone trench along that side of the, of the street, and it would capture the runoff. And then, as I stated before, there's a low area down in this area here, and what we would do is direct the runoff into it. It wouldn't go onto the street.
Can you say the low area once more?
Sure. This is, let me zoom in more. So this, this area down here, you can see the contours. This is 239, 239, 240, 241. This is a bowl. And what we would do is, let, put the water into that bowl. It's actually a preferred low-impact development element. You want to put runoff into natural areas and let it naturally go into the ground. And what we would do on this side of the roadway is we'd put a stone trench and pitch it down into this area. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go there, or even maybe look. It's pretty thick. But we've laid it all out, and if the board wishes to take a sidewalk or walk by yourself, give me a call. I'll either go with you or just let me know if you're going. I've actually walked here with Gabby, and you can see what happens is, is you come in off the road, it goes down, and then it goes up. So it's about a, oh, let's see, that's 250, 252, and this is down at, it's about a 12-foot climb from the road up. You really can't see it when you're on the street because it's so heavily wooded, and it's not even real woods through that area. It's brush. You know, it's low brush. Most of the trees in there are red oaks and pines. And in this area here, what we're trying to do, and maybe if you looked at the first plan, we were working, again, right up next to the property line. Over here, what we've done is we've pushed the driveway over to the right, as you look at it, and so that's further away from our neighbor that's over there on the left. And we, if you go down and look at the site, if you've had a chance, and I'm not asking anybody to close this hearing tonight, so I hope you will take a look at it. That driveway really impacts very little large trees. There are some, but there's, it's really, I think, a very good buffer remaining over there on the left side as you go up.
So there's no potential for you, because you're pitching the road to the right, there's no potential there for you to be shedding onto the new potential near Lot 1?
No, he's gonna go, well, the guy on Lot 1, this guy right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely gonna go on his property, so we're putting a drain easement down there. And what we've done is we've calculated how big the water will come up during a big storm, and that's how we cut the drainage easement out, so that it stays below that, you know, 240.5 contour. That's what we're trying to hit.
If you do this with the waivers, does it, will there still be the high retaining wall?
No, no wall at all over on the left side. And we'll be able to leave a lot of trees over there on the left side as well. And that's what I was, that's why I think it would be good if you go out and took a look at it. You'd be able to see the center of the stakes, six feet on either side, and you'll see how much of a buffer is being retained to the left.
And, you know my favorite question from a police and fire perspective, have the chiefs weighed in?
Yes, I think it should be in your, in your pack, in our chairman's pack, and we've, all of the department heads have weighed in with their comments.
They'd have a way to back out?
Yeah. And if they ever had to go back to that house, hmm, there's a big driveway to turn around into. You know, so that's the plan right now. But if they had to back up, they wouldn't have to back up all the way to Water Street. They could turn around in there.
Under, if you were to build that conventionally, would you have had to bring in, like, a hydrant line?
Yes. Yep, we would have to bring in, if the water department asked for it. And I'm sure they would, because we would, if we had to build the whole thing, we'd ask the town to accept it. So then that would be, we'd have to build it to the standard water, lights.
And conservation, I'm sure, has-
Yep. So we've met with conservation last Monday, not this Monday, last Monday, we met with conservation, did a site walk today and yesterday, and I'm pretty sure all the members were there between the two days. And so, you know, we're working with them on it. The, we are meeting with them again on-
November 1st.
November 1st, thank you. And so, we're gonna have further discussions with them. But really, what I want to point out is, none of the road falls under the conservation's jurisdiction, unless you make us build the whole road, then a portion of it would. But if it's, if this configuration is built, almost none of the road, maybe 10 square feet of it, would fall under their jurisdiction. So, they're more concerned with the location of the house and the septic and clearing, things like that. And that was, and we have also met with the Board of Health. So the Board of Health, what we're doing is we're showing the septic system up in this area here. In Foxborough, we have a regulation that says that septic systems have to be 150 feet away. So in this particular site, it's almost no place where you can get 150 feet away. So what we've asked the commission or the Board of Health is to grant us a waiver so that we can, but we would use a nitrogen reduction system. It would make the effluent much cleaner. They said, yeah, we'd like you to try harder to get the septic system further away. So what we're gonna look at next is moving it further south and west to see if we can get at least 150 feet away. But again, that will not impact the roadway or anything like that. We would, you know, we would just work with them on that.
Any questions from the board at this time?
No.
Let me read those in the board.
We've got some boards and departments that have weighed in. Gabby, this is from Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health. Just an FYI, the Board of Health did not approve the installation of a septic system on the site. At the last meeting, we will meet about it again, but in general, the property is within 200 feet of a surface water body and needs a variance from the Board of Health to install a septic system. The board asked Bill Buckley to come back in front of the board with a system that is further away than proposed. I will keep you in the loop. Then from Lance, who is the Town Engineer, my comments for the revisions at 31 Water Street are as follows. That if the requested waivers are approved, the road be privately owned and maintained, disregard if this is already the case. All stormwater runoff from the swales should be contained in the drain easement shown. This may require addition of a detention basin to ensure during peak storms. I'm not sure when the original submission was approved, but the area of disturbance shown appears to exceed the one-acre threshold outlined in the stormwater regulations enacted by the planning board on an August 13, 2020. As the designated stormwater authority, I will leave it up to the planning board's discretion whether this revision would trigger the land disturbance permit process. And due to the significant service length, approximately 560 feet, the Water Division has requested that the meter be installed in a meter pit near the service connection on Water Street. Example spec sheet is attached. From Chief Grace, no concerns from the Police Department. From Deputy Chief David Larissy, the Fire Department has no issues with the proposed project. From Jane Sears Pierce, the conservation agent, the Conservation Commission is scheduled to review this application during their meeting October 4. If you'd like me to, I'll send you a copy of my agent's report when I finish writing it. From Barry Ringler, the Building Commissioner, no concerns. I have no questions.
Anything from you, Paige?
Nope.
Okay.
You all know how I feel.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who has comments or questions, just state your name and address for the record, please.
And come up to the microphone, please.
Yeah, have a seat.
Hello, I'm Paul Haynesworth. I'm at 10 Woodland Road. And I guess my concern here is that this is a, how this has a single-family property at the moment. It's just one house. And I had talked to the, and you saw the comments from Mr. Brennan at the Board of Health, that the septic is problematic out on that peninsula, getting the 200 feet away. Nitrogen reduction system also, you know, that notwithstanding, that's the regulation. My concern for this board is dividing the lot if the Board of Health, if, now we're talking about two houses, we're talking about two fairly large septic systems squeezed into this same, same area. There's really no way to do it on the end of that peninsula with, without some significant waivers. We're talking very, you know, big waivers from the 200 or the 150. So my concern is, for this board, you know, why should we be approving a subdivision of this into two lots if the septic system is not workable? If you can't put two septic systems on this property, and it's certainly, they're not sharing a septic system, then it's, if we allow the division of the property and then come back to it and say, oh, well, you know, now we have to work. We've already got it divided. We've got this road built. Now we need to find a way to squeeze two septic systems onto this piece of land that's very, very close to the lake where all, my kids swim in there. So, that's my, my main concern is, you know, if one of these systems, there, no matter what kind of system you're talking about, you've got a distribution box in there, that thing collapses, as mine did. I just, I discovered when I sold my house last year, the box had been collapsed. I don't know how long, but it was leaking out into the, into the yard. I don't know how long it was there. It was, nothing was wrong with my house. Everything, toilets flushed. So, that's my concern, is that if this doesn't, you know, if it's not feasible for two septic systems to be on this little land right next to the lake, why should we, we should not be, I think we shouldn't be dividing the property. And that's just, you know, that just seems to make sense, and I think maybe waiting till the Board of Health comes to a conclusion on that might make more sense.
And just to explain, the only purview, that, if the Board of Health says they can't do it, regardless of what we say, it, it, it doesn't happen. We only have purview over the road, not the structure, not the septic, and the subdivision. So, you know, if the septic piece doesn't clear the Board of Health, this wouldn't happen. So, and we have no purview over that.
But would you wait to subdivide the land until the Board of Health comes to a conclusion? Or would that be something, it would seem to me, it would make more sense to table-
That's probably what, we're not taking a vote on this tonight.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're, I definitely want to do a site visit, and I'm sure some of the other board members do as well. And then, you know, we still need conservation to weigh in. We still need the Board of Health to weigh in. So, it's, no one's gonna make a knee-jerk reaction without understanding the whole picture.
Okay.
Because we understand your concerns. I swim in that lake many times myself.
There you go. I grew up swimming in that lake, so.
It was not illegally. I have a friend who's part of the Lake Association.
As did we.
Okay. So we're both illegal.
No, no. Mr. Haynesworth is definitely not illegal.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, please come up and just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Young. I live across the street. I'm at 32 Water Street. So I just have a quick question about something I saw on Foxborough discussion on Facebook. It was basically showing some roads in Foxborough that are designated as scenic roads, Water Street being one of them.
Oh, I've seen that.
Yeah. And I, it, it might have been related to something else, but I thought, oh, this might be applicable to this property, because there is a very old stone wall that goes across this section that would be, you know, the new driveway. So I just wanted to raise that, and because I think that's-
If that's the case, they would need a permit if you're disturbing or-
This is a scenic, this is a scenic road. Water Street is a scenic road which requires a permit from the planning board. It goes through the selectmen and planning board. So once the planning board decides what kind of road you're gonna make us build, then we will apply for a scenic road permit in order to remove whatever section of wall has to be removed, depending on the road that has to be built. And what we would probably do is, what we will do, is once the board decides, you know, and before you close the hearing, what we will do is file with the selectmen, so we can just kind of wrap it all together and do it all.
What did you say, the width of the new driveway would be 12 feet, is that what you said?
That's 12 feet. So a new, if it was a regular road, it would be 20 feet with 35-foot radiuses. So you'd be taking out probably, you know, 20, 30, 40, 45 feet of wall, maybe more. And this should be taken out maybe 14 or 15 feet of wall.
But we'd have to approve it.
Yes. It has to go through. It's, it's not really, the way I read the bylaws, it's not discretionary. But we do have to come before the board, and we have to, you know, show what's going on.
This is a process that we went through when McNamara Way was built off of North High Street, I believe.
Yeah.
So it, it is, as Mr. Buckley said, you know, we started the process of the subdivision approval and then started the process for a scenic road.
Yeah, and traditionally, scenic road bylaws can't be used to stop development. You know, it's not like because there's a stone wall there, no one could ever access the property. That's just not, they don't have damaged teeth. But it does allow for a review to ensure that no more of the stone wall or any trees get damaged, to make sure the safeguards in place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from board, or anybody else in the audience have any questions or comments?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until-
Can I look at my calendar as we do this?
No, Mr. Buckley.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Just to clarify, if the Board of Health doesn't sign off on it, then the Planning Board wouldn't be able to do so.
Right.
That's the one Board that has bearing on this decision.
So we are meeting with the Conserva, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to meet until we've met with Concom and kind of pinned that stuff down. So what's your schedule look like mid to late November?
We only meet once in November.
Yeah, we got November 4th and December 9th.
December 9th, okay.
At?
7:15.
7:15 PM. That work for you, Mr. Buckley?
Wide open.
There you go.
Yeah, the reason for November is we have Veterans Day on the Thursday, and then Thanksgiving. So we, and then ZBA has the other night here, so we couldn't just move around. So that's why we had to have an abbreviated schedule in November. I'm sure you're all devastated.
I was going to just say, are you sad?
I am, but I'm sure... I'm crying on the inside. I make motion to continue the public hearing to December 9th at 7:15.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. It being sometime after 8:00 PM, we have a public hearing site plan review.
Just for folks, because I know this is a hot topic in town right now, the Water Street development, because it's a continued public hearing, they do not notify butters again. So you're going to want to mark your calendars, 7:15 on December 9th.
And feel free to call or email the office, like, if you want to make sure that they're coming, because sometimes things get continued. So feel free to check in with one of us.
I was just channeling my inner Paige.
Good thinking. Didn't think of that, I'm distracted.
Thank you.
It being after, sometime after 8:00 PM, we have a public hearing site plan review, 5 Springbrook Road, G. Green, is that San Antonio Gordon Green Road? Properties LLC.
I know, that's weird, huh?
He means weird. Thank you.
Oh!
Yeah, I'll take it. Thanks. Oh, actually, no, I think I have them, but thank you.
Yes.
Bring them over, Ron Bressi's process. Or a tree tech.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, yeah. All right, Mr. Buckley, whatever you rather.
Okay, let's see. Shoot. So, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening again for the record. My name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and I'm here representing the applicant, G. Green. And I'm going to put up, again, a rendering for you, if I can find it. Okay, there we go. I know that's tough to see, let me zoom in a little bit. So this is 5 Springbrook Road, and actually, this project was approved by the Board, I'm not even sure, I should have it off the top of my head, but I don't. It's probably 20 years old. This used to be an auto repair shop. It's on Springbrook Road, East Boucher Road, the dump road going up, you have to pass the hockey rink on your left. It's a dead-end road, Springbrook Road. Tree Tech is on there, Ron Bressi's...
Where is it in relation to Tree Tech and Ron?
So you come in off Springbrook Road, it's the second one on the right. So you go past the, the, the first building on your right has the antenna on it, and that's roundses, and then the next one, this is it. So what has happened to this is, I think it was last year, last January, this was a garage, what was the name of the?
Spring Brook Auto.
It was Spring Brook Auto, right. So he was, he, he sold out to G. Green Properties, which is G. Green Construction, which is a huge construction company in Boston. So Mr. Green, Bob Green, he, what he does is, he's used this facility, he came in and cleaned it. It's immaculate now, and he's cleaned up the grounds. And what he does is, he collects vehicles, construction vehicles. So they might be construction dump trucks, they could be bulldozers, backho, not backho's, but there's no excavators there. But construction equipment, and some of it's really dated, and what he does is, he brings it in here and restores it, and then he displays it. So next time you drive up there, you can see, he's displayed probably half, at least half a dozen in his, in the yard itself.
The yard looks great.
It does. He did a fabulous job. Then, so what he now wants to do is, he wants to take it, if you look at the drawing I gave you, the rendering, so the pink, the pinkish is what's there now. And the brown is a proposed addition, which is in the front of the building. So it would be on, right on top of the existing parking lot. It's about 95% over the, by two minutes parking lot, and then maybe 5% over the gravel pad that's there. It's 54 by 60, and I do have a, a copy of the, I could throw up the rendering, but what it is, is it basically looks like the existing building. So what he wants to do, and it will have two garage doors in the front, and he just needs more space for his facility. So there'll be no additional people, it has enough parking for what they do there now. There's been no change in any of the infrastructure. He did have to go back before Conservation last fall, because in his cleanup mode, he became very energetic, and was cleaning up around the outside, and he was within the buffer zone. So the Conservation put a hold on him, and he had to come in, and he's doing a restoration plan now. He was supposed to have started last week, I think he did. So what he's doing now, he's cleaning up the areas, building a little wall back there, doing some buffer zone plantings. None of that is impacted by this. As I said, the building is only going on top of the existing pavement in the front. We've been before the Conservation Commission, and we got a negative determination from them, I think it was last week again, with one condition, was it?
I finally got it signed, and I gave it to Christine today.
And it was a negative determination, but there was one condition which said basically that she would, Jane, the Conservation Agent, would not sign the building permit until he finished the plantings out here, like he's supposed to. I said, absolutely fair. So that was a condition. We got a comment letter from the Board of Health was asking about flows, so I sent a, sent a response that, yeah, there's, the septic system that's there was designed for more flows than what's going to be here. This is basically, and there is an office space in there, but it's basically one guy there most of the time. So, and I think that was it. I didn't see any other comment letters. Did we get any?
Aye.
No, it's, there's one from Jane, as you mentioned, she dated it, the 12th, that he just needs to deal with the, the unpermitted alteration and clean that up. And from Matt Brennan, existing septic system would need to be upgraded if the addition is causing a change of flow into the septic. Engineers should provide the Health Department, as you mentioned. No comments from Lance, no comments from Mr. Grace, and no other comments at all.
Nothing from Fire?
Nothing from Fire. Mr. Bressi did call me, because he's out of town, but he did want to tell me that he supports this project, he feels that he's been a good neighbor, and that he's, he did a very good job cleaning up the site and making it much better on the road.
And Mr. Bressi is in a butter.
He is in a butter.
Okay. His business is in a butter.
He would have procused himself on it.
He would have, but he, you know, he asked me, he asked me to mention it, he called me specifically to tell me.
So I think that's really it. It's pretty straightforward stuff. There's no, the only neighbor that you heard from is supporting it, and...
End of question. What's with that relocated well? Is that...
Where, Jeff? Where, Jeff?
Right to the left side of the proposed addition.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a, I think it's a monitoring well.
Okay.
It's not a irrigation well. So he might not even relocate it. It'd probably be based on whatever his 21E told him to do. He might just demo it.
So when you said, when you were talking about cleanup, was there environmental remediation from the auto body shop?
No. No.
Or could it be flows from the dump?
No, what I think, what, and I don't know this, I'm just giving you my educated guess, 20, you have to have a 20, 21E, everybody know what 21E is? 21E, so, 21E, so the 21E guy came in and said, so what they do, it's called preliminary site assessment, it's a phase one. And all that is, is a walk-around and then a record search. And then at the end of the, at the end of the report, it says one of two things. There are, there are recognized site, site conditions that might be an issue, or there are not. So then, clearly, there are recognized site conditions here, it's a body shop. So then what the bank probably said is, I want a phase two. And so the phase two is wells. I'm guessing, I'm guessing that's what happened. So they made him sink some wells to see if there was any contamination, and obviously not, because Green probably wouldn't have bought it. That's, that's my guess.
I have no questions.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? Pretty straightforward.
Make a motion to close the public hearing related to 5 Springbrook Road, G. Green Properties LLC.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve...
Site plan review.
The site plan review for 5 Springbrook Road, G. Green Properties LLC.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready, conditions? Do you want to kind of come back on, like what Conservation said?
Yeah, standard conditions.
Standard conditions, and that the occupancy permit won't be signed off upon until he finishes the plantings.
Building permit.
Building permit, sorry.
Being sometime past 8:15 PM, informal discussion, minor modification for Forbes Crossing.
I think they all left the room.
Forbes Crossing people?
Perhaps.
County. Got it done before they come back.
Did you hear your name, Mr. Spillane? Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Are you here for the next one, too? Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Spillane. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. That's how Mike do.
How are you?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I think I, is this them?
Is that okay?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Clear.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill likes my glasses, what I can say. They're blue light, here to hide my bags. Yes, I said that on TV.
Okay.
You can get a pair.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Spillane. Have to wait too long as it is.
That's quite all right.
Good evening, Attorney Frank Spillane here for the Salton Real Estate Group with regard to 2 Forbes Boulevard, Forbes Crossing. With me this evening is Chris Grusilius of the Salton Real Estate Group, and Eric Previ of Dupree Engineering. The last pad site at Forbes Crossing, again, 2 Forbes Boulevard, has not been built yet, and the Salton Group has a tenant for the site. So they're proposing to build a building there with a drive-through facility. The proposed building will be 5,300 square feet, where originally, it was proposed to be 6,200 square feet. So it'll be a smaller building that was originally proposed on the site plan. Again, the building will have a drive-through. Original site plan and special permit did not have a drive-through at that site. For that reason, we met with the planning staff and went through this. And within the site plan approval, condition number three states that any proposed changes from the approved plan deemed substantive by the Planning Board shall be submitted for review by the Planning Board, or the Building Commissioner can make that determination. So we thought it would be best if we came here, reviewed informally with this board our proposed building for the site with the drive-through, and get a determination from this board, hopefully that it's not a deemed substantive change to the original plan, so that we can move forward with that building.
So can you explain to us how they're actually going to enter into the drive-through exit, and how they'll get back out to wherever they need to go?
I'd like to ask civil engineer Eric Previ.
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Eric Previ, P-R-I-V as in Victor E. I'm a registered professional engineer with Dupree Engineering. Yeah, we, and we were the original engineers of record on, when the full development had come through as well. There's multiple ways it could come through, but the, coming in the E western side is where it queues up. So I believe everybody has a handout. I'm actually looking at the color version of it right now. We gave two, two of them. One was an overlay, and then the color, I think the color's a little easier. That aerial is actually a, the aerial is August of 2021, so it's a very recent aerial as well. And so, yeah, the cars would come in from the western side. You could either come in from the bank side, so the first parcel on the left is the bank that's there today. There's an entrance that comes in to, keeping the bank on your left as if you were going back to the, like, fit factory, the, over there. Or you could all alternatively go up to the Raised Island where the hotel is, and take a left and come in that way. But you'd be queuing into, directly into the western side of the building. The order board is on the southwestern portion of the building, and then the window would be on the southern portion of the building.
Is it two businesses or one?
There are two businesses shown. There is an 1,800 square foot that is associated with the drive-through, and then the other half would be 3,500 that is not associated with the drive-through. It'd be for retail or services.
What's the nature of the business, the drive-through?
Do you want to say?
Yeah, I think we can, can let them know it's Tropical Cafe Smoothie. So it's a sort of fast casual, primarily, obviously, smoothie restaurant.
But there's no way, there's no way they can come, see where the light green is towards the bottom?
Sure. I'm just going to approach that, just to make it a little easier.
Yeah, that would, okay, so see, right, yeah, right there. There's no way they can come out anywhere near Starbucks, can they?
No, they cannot. So the exit, after they came to the drive window here, they would have to continue straight through here.
Yep.
There's actually a transformer here that we're not planning on moving. So if they wanted to exit, they could exit, and I would think most conveniently would be to come back to the hotel, the Raised Island in front of the hotel here. That would be the most convenient way to go, I would think. I wouldn't think people would, but they could take a left in theory and go all the way back around and go this way. I, I would think that people would tend to take the right and take the right if they're...
I just wanted to make sure that, because...
They are not, yeah.
You're right, the Starbucks would be an issue, yeah.
And, well, Starbucks is an issue by itself, and adding anything to that would be bad.
So the exit would come out to a completely different area altogether.
Okay.
It's four highlighted parking spaces, are they going to be eliminated for turning purposes, is that the...
These right here?
No, the other end of the building, the other corner where they're going to make...
That would be the most convenient way to go, I would think. I wouldn't think people would, but they could take a left, in theory, and come all the way back around and go this way. I, I would think that people would tend to take the right and take the right if they're...
I just wanted to make sure that, because...
They are not, yeah.
You're right, the Starbucks would be an issue, yeah, but it's not.
And, well, Starbucks is an issue by itself, and adding anything to that would be bad.
So the exit would come out to a completely different area altogether.
Great, okay.
There's four highlighted parking spaces, are they gonna be eliminated for turning purposes? Is that the...
Uh, these right here?
No, the other end of the building, the other corner where they're gonna make a hard turn.
These are actually, that are not striped today. Um, it just was the way that the, right here, uh, right here, there's a few, they weren't striped today, it's just where the, where the construction was, we can strike them, uh, as part of the...
So they're not being taken away?
No, they're being...
So a car's gonna be able to make that half turn turn?
For, around the corner?
Yeah, coming there, yes.
Yeah, because, uh, you have two options, either you have, if you were coming from the bank side, you could queue around here, or you'd be coming from the right side, it is a full twenty-four foot drive aisle there.
It's a two-way.
It is a two-way in this area, so you'd be coming from the right side, cutting across there.
But then, but, okay.
It's a little tight turn.
Yeah, but, yeah, my concern is, if they're coming in from the bank, and they try to get into that drive-through...
Sure, sure.
That's tight.
Around there.
That's real tight.
Like, I, I wouldn't be in support of that. That is just a train wreck waiting to happen.
When I see them highlighted, I was wondering if you're proposing to eliminate them.
Those spaces, to make sure they can get in.
Yeah.
They're not there today.
My cons, I would not, I would not be in support of having both entrances into that drive-through. They can come around, you know, by the hotel and, like, go that way, absolutely no problem, but not a two-way entrance there. A, it's too tight, and, and B, that area of this development is already a disaster because of the Starbucks, how that's configured.
That's already a two-way. We're not controlling that.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, okay, so...
No, but they swing around wide around the building to go back down towards either direction.
Right, if they come around here, they're gonna have to swing it to get in.
Yeah.
And they're gonna have to swing on to the other side of the road to get in there. I wouldn't be okay with that.
Well, how can you stop that?
I, yeah, you can, because you could...
They're both public roads, or they're both...
You, no, this is not a public road.
Two-way road.
It's not a public road, it's parking lot. They can make it, we can say, listen, the condition is that they can only come into the, the drive-through this way.
How do you control that? Put an island there, put a barrier?
Figure a, the curbing.
They can figure the curbing, so you can't hit in there.
I think people are gonna see the difficulty and probably just ought to have it go the other way.
I just think you, you could have people swinging out. I, I would only be comfortable with it if they could enter that drive-through from that one way.
Tracy, how well do you know this site?
Very well.
She's there all the time, yeah.
Between Fit Factory and Starbucks, I'm a regular.
I mean, my only observation is gonna, yeah, I mean, I can just tell, I'm not that familiar, but there's a lot going on, you know?
And now I will be there, 'cause, even more 'cause of the smoothies. It's, it's, this whole thing is way tight, like, I, I don't like this development at all, just the, the logistics of the traffic flow, and I just think adding that is just gonna make it another pinch point to an already, an area that has multiple.
Well, I'd like to point out that it was initially approved for a sixty-two hundred square foot restaurant that, you know, could have housed two hundred...
Not a drive-through.
Not a drive-through, but, you know, would have, would have caused substantially more parking, uh, than what is proposed here.
That's not my issue. The parking isn't the issue with the drive-through.
The traffic, yeah.
That is a substantial change.
Can I just explore one thing on that? So, uh, you, you mentioned parking. It, will there be on inside seating here as well, or is it exclusively drive-through?
There will be inside seating. Not, not a lot, maybe forty seats, probably not even.
Right, yeah, not even that much, right.
So the question being asked is, this is major or minor? If it's major, then they'd have to come through a whole, the whole formal process. If it's minor, then you could approve it, you know?
With conditions.
With conditions. I do think to Tracy's point, I mean, just from a logistical perspective, um, knowing that area not as well, but I think, too, just thinking of how crazy everybody is these days, when you have two people coming into the same, you know, it's just, like, you have a whole line of people here around the building, and then you have someone swinging in this way, and it's just like...
Yeah, I mean, think of any drive-through.
Yeah, there's usually a starting point, and so it might make sense, because, I mean, assuming no one goes beyond the building, you're fine-ish, you know, except for the pinch point, but if you start having people queue be on the northerly side of the building, presumably along that back of the building, then you have folks coming up from the other side, it's just, it doesn't flow.
And you're gonna impact the bank. I mean, because they're gonna end up queuing into the bank parking lot. So here's, part of me says it's...
You might end up with two queues, I mean, the thing is, what are you gonna, like, that's...
Yeah, but at least the queue from this way isn't gonna be that disruptive.
Yeah, but you never want two queues, like, that's just a fight.
Well, you never want two queues, but the one queue is...
Then who goes first? It's just a recipe for disaster.
Well, you go every other one, it's like the Chick-fil-A drive-through.
People don't listen. Oh, it's, it's a fight.
But, um, you know, part of me says it's major, because this didn't have a drive-through, and to me, that's pretty substantial, but as long as we can address that drive-through situation with conditions, I wouldn't care if it was construed as minor.
Well, can I make an observation about that? And, and I don't disagree with the minor designation. On the other hand, I, I'm a little, more than a little reluctant to kind of sit here and tinker with it, not really having a handle on, you know, what's, what's really going on, what's, what's what. I mean, I think that's...
What don't we, I mean, they're basically wanting us to react to this, and I'm reacting and saying, I, I won't vote for it.
What I'm saying is that...
Unless they address. And we're not gonna vote tonight, it's a formal discussion anyway.
I think I'd like to see a little more, you know, um, in terms of, maybe there are some options, maybe there's some best recommendations, may, and, you know, in the old days, you used to say, oh, you gotta go in and hire a traffic engineer to...
Oh, no.
Engineer the site. I, I'm not suggesting anything like that, but...
But I think if we determine it's major versus minor, what they have to do next is determined by if we say it's major or minor.
Well, I think tonight you could also say, hey, guys, can you go back to the drawing board and address Tracy's concerns and others' concerns, and have them come back with their next iteration? I mean, that's...
I mean, if that makes sense.
Well, one of the things I, I asked Chris to look into is how much they anticipate going through the drive-through, and, um, that they anticipate their peak hours of...
Well, to put it in perspective, the average Starbucks does approximately fifty orders per hour in their drive-through, uh, whereas this tenant, uh, their average is about fourteen transactions through their drive-through, so it's a much less intense drive-through than Starbucks would. It's actually, I would call it more of, almost more of a pickup window, uh, where you order your, you know, beverage on an app, and it's ready to be picked up through the window. So, you know, the intensity will be much different than Starbucks. I'd also like to point out that, you know, this, uh, I'm sure everyone's seen in the news, there's a, uh, sort of global supply of labor shortage, and Starbucks is not, um, has certainly not been, um, unaffected by that. Uh, they've had to, uh, shut off their mobile ordering system here because they don't have enough staff. Additionally, when they do have staff, uh, they're new and not trained, so...
Do you go to the...
If you've seen any of the issues, uh, with the drive-through, a lot of it is short-term related to labor supply issues.
Do you go to that Starbucks often?
Sure. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I go every day, as does my husband. I order, they have not shut off their mobile app.
No, they have.
Oh, no, I've been ordering.
Yeah, I have been unable to do the mobile ordering at the Forbes Crossing one.
No, I've been able to do it.
Maybe it's the time of day?
Might be the time of day. So, here's the thing, I don't personally, if it's fourteen, if it's fifty, that's a pinch point. It's too tight, even if there's a queue, it's gonna back in. There's, I, I mean, to be very blunt, there's nothing you can say that is gonna make me say, yeah, I'm good with having two queues going in, two, two ways. And if, if the volume isn't gonna be that hard, it, it isn't gonna be that high, then routing everyone that way shouldn't be, one way shouldn't be of concern to the business.
Is there a way that you could do that? So, if we were able to, through curbing, um, sort of stop the flow of traffic through the...
Bank?
Bank, and route it, you know, over the Raised Island and in that way, um, that would change the, the mind, your mind?
Some signage probably could help, too, uh, you know, as people are approaching, right, they're driving in from the main area.
Yep.
Queuing them to where the drive-through line is would be helpful, right?
Yeah, signing and, signage and curbing would be fine.
Well...
And I'll tell you, I will be one of the biggest customers, I promise you, because we don't have a smoothie, we don't have a smoothie place in town, so I'm thrilled.
And respectfully, you know, uh, the tenant has the option to terminate this lease if we don't come to a resolution, so, you know, I would like to come to a resolution if we could, because I spent a lot of time and effort into this, I don't want them to walk over just being delayed.
If they walk over something like this, that, that would be interesting.
Well, they can, I'm just saying they have the right to.
They can, but if they would, I mean, it, this is a great location.
I agree.
I mean, I would help you solve them on that if you needed me to, but this, this becomes a, a, you know, a safety issue, um, and a concern for the bank. You know, if a queue doesn't, and does end up building that way, and just people coming in from the bank and having to swing to get in the, the line, I...
I, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, I think if it does back up, that, you know, you've got the side of the building there that...
Yeah.
You know, makes it, makes it easier if, if that does happen, so, you know, so would you do an island here?
I don't know, I feel very passionate about this, as you can tell.
All right. So we could... I, I feel confident that we could come up with something that gets it from an angle that you would have to be approaching from the other direction. You wouldn't physically be able to do it, and again, with some signage, I think the combination of those two, that they could be able to.
And I, I'd prefer people coming that way anyway, so...
And I, I think, you know, the signage should direct them in over the island thing. It's a great idea as well.
I, I'd rather have them go in that way, because I'd rather have them avoid the bank.
Yeah.
Well, and also, the other reason that's good, too, is it also gets them a little bit out of the intersection, right, rather than if they're putting their blinker on left to go at the bank, they might be queuing into the, into the back as well. So that gets them in, gets them into the, keeps them moving.
Gets them further into the...
Gets them moving, right, anytime you can have a...
It gets them halfway through the development, you know?
Yep. Sure, those are, those make sense.
So what are you thinking, that you come back in two weeks with some revised documents? Does that schedule-wise work for you guys?
Eric, can you do in two weeks?
Sure. I'm not worried about that.
Any idea what's going in the other part?
No.
It's a great location, so hopefully we'll be able to fill it soon.
Through time?
Through time.
I think we're open, right?
Seven thirty? Thirty? Seven twenty? Seven twenty?
Seven twenty.
Well, since they sat, Ed, they had to sit here for so long, let's get them in as early as possible.
I mean, we could do seven-ten, that might be kind, because...
Don't we have something, seven-ten?